Great, whenever you're ready, John.
Okay. I'm ready whenever the script is up. Okay, here we go. The time is now 5:35 PM and I am calling to order the South End Landmark District Commission, May 6, 2025, public hearing. Commissioners present are Catherine Hunt, Peter Sanborn. Kevin, remind me of your last name?
Ready.
Ready, Kevin Ready, and Chris DeBoer. And did I miss anybody? I don't think so.
No.
Today, the commission will be holding a public hearing to review applications in accordance with the Commonwealth of Massachusetts Executive Order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, extending the suspension of these provisions until June 30, 2027. We are conducting this meeting online. To ensure public access to the deliberations of the South End Landmark District Commission, the public may access this call through telephone and video conferencing. This hearing is being recorded. All further conversations between commissioners should be audible to the public in attendance until the hearing has adjourned. Are there any media or elected officials currently present? If so, please raise your hand using the Zoom meeting platform and state your name, title, and affiliation. Sarah, do we see anybody raising their hand?
No, I don't see any hands raised.
Okay, great, we'll proceed. Members of the public will have an opportunity to ask questions and provide public comment on applications and discussions. To do so, please raise your hand in the application via the Zoom meeting platform. We will repeat these instructions throughout the hearing. So tonight's agenda will begin with a violation, followed by design review, and then we will have administrative review. There is going to be a presentation and discussion on EV chargers in the South End Landmark District, a ratification of the meeting minutes from March 4, and then staff updates, followed by adjournment. So let's begin. So with violations. And the violation we have on the agenda is 139 West Canton Street. The proposed work was the restoring of previously existing windows where possible and replacing windows which cannot be restored with in-kind replacements.
Yes, good evening, Mr. Chairman.
Yep. Please give us your full name and then carry on with your presentation.
Sure, thank you very much. Once again, good evening, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. My name is Matt Ekel. I am an attorney with Fletcher Tilton on behalf of 139 West Canton Street LLC. Joining me tonight is Mr. Pedro Gomez, the owner of the property. As you're aware, we're here tonight to address violations relating to the property at 139 West Canton Street and to discuss our proposed action plan and this design review application to remedy the situation. By way of brief background, I'll just kind of highlight the process we've gone through so far and then hopefully we can, we can share the presentation itself. But the property was purchased in late 2024. Mr. Gomez completed some cosmetic upgrades, including some interior painting and things of the like. And upon doing those minor cosmetic renovations, realized the real dire condition that the windows were in. It was pretty clear that they were severely deteriorated and posed habitability concerns. Some of these issues were rotten sashes, missing or failing sills, warped frames, and failing storm windows which prevented proper sealing and created potential for continued water damage as well as uninhabitable conditions based upon the heating. In seeking to remedy, remedy this, Mr. Gomez looked into potential historic accurately windows. There were several that were backordered, so he did move forward with a plan to replace the windows with some more readily available comparable windows, which actually did in a lot of ways mimic what was there. But went forward with the replacement in an effort to make sure that his tenant had, had proper heat and no further damage or, or public safety issues arose from the, the condition of the windows. Obviously, he was unaware of the need or the possibility to get any kind of emergency approval from this commission and, and was only made aware after the fact that there could be a potential violation for, for replacing windows without the commission's approval. Upon learning of the potential or the actual violation, we did reach out to staff. We've had many conversations with Rachel and Gabby and alerted them to the situation and essentially requested the violation and the ability to chart a path forward to, to work with you to, to make additional repairs or replacements that are up to the commission's standard. As part of this process, we actually, Mr. Gomez reached out to Anthony Greenwood from Old Bostonian, who investigated the existing windows that have been taken out to see their condition. And he determined that approximately half the windows could potentially be saved, but the other half were, were too far gone. So Mr. Gomez did store those windows in a temperature-controlled setting with the, with the thought process and with the plan to have those restored and put back. So in, in a nutshell, the, the plan is twofold. One is to replace the windows that could be salvaged and put back. And part two, the ones that couldn't be salvaged would be to be replaced essentially a second time to be more, more to the commission's liking, hopefully. So that's kind of the background and how we got here. In terms of the presentation, it's rather brief and a little bit duplicitous from what I've already said, but we'll go through it just to give the, some of the images of the existing conditions as well as what we're proposing. So this first page here just again kind of highlights the, the bad condition the windows were in when Mr. Gomez took over the property and the inability to really heat it or provide a habitable or safe residential setting. Rachel, next slide, please. This was the emergency act, action plan. So the owner, Mr. Gomez, purchased and installed the windows really that he could get his hands on the quickest just to provide that habitable setting inside the, the unit. So they were Anderson 100 series. For all intents and purposes, very similar to what was there. But again, it was done without this commission's approval. Next slide, please. This here is the, just a side by side. So on the left is what was the previous conditions. On the right is what's been changed. So you can see in the blue there on the top, we replaced the not original six over six windows with in-kind six over six windows. In, in working with staff, we understand that two over two would probably be preferable there. So even though these are new windows, we would be looking to replace the six over six with two over twos. We preserved and replaced with in-kind two over two in the middle, the, the parlor level there and the, the third level, so to speak. And those are the ones that could be preserved and restored by Old Bostonian. And then the lower level, as you can see in green, those are also not salvageable. So we would be replacing those, or we did replace those, excuse me, with in-kind two over two simulated divided light. Next slide, please. And I should say for the record too, I, I misspoke when I said Pedro Gomez was the owner. It's Mr. Pedro Ojeda, so I apologize for that. This is the proposed action. So again, I touched upon this briefly, but the, the six over six that's currently existing on that top level, we're proposing to replace with historically accurate two over two. We believe sometime 40, 50, 60 years ago, these became six over six. But we believe the two over two is more appropriate and, and we believe that staff agrees with us. Again, in the red and section B there, those would all be the windows to be restored by Old Bostonian and put back in with new storm windows. And then on the lower level there is what's identified as C. We would remove the iron grills from those windows and then we would replace again with historically accurate two over two wood windows. Next page, please. So this is for A and C. So again, that was the top and the bottom floor. These are the proposed replacements. So this would be ultimate wood double hung windows from Marvin. And working with Old Bostonian, they, they believe that these have been approvable at other sites throughout the South End, including 21 Wellington. And we believe the two over two is appropriate and, and hope the commission obviously agrees. Next slide. And this is just for reference. This is the letter from Old, Old Bostonian back to Mr. Ojeda relating to their, you know, inventory and review of the windows as, as was currently existing. Again, approximately half of the windows could be salvaged. The other half were too far gone, would take over, you know, 50% restoration and was just not financially feasible, which is why we're proposing the, the new but comparable two over two window configuration. So with that, again, we, we do apologize for the oversight, you know, relating to this replacement and the really lack of knowledge that an emergency approval could have been done and maybe this could have been done a different way. We do hope that going through this process will not only, you know, bring this building back to vitality with its historic character, but actually improve it by going from the six over six to two over two. And we appreciate the commission's consideration and we'll happily take any, any questions or comments.
And this is staff. I just want to let everyone know that John Freeman joined. Thank you.
Right. So thank you, Matt, for that very clear presentation. Much appreciated, the clarity and all of the diagrams that you provided. I think they're very helpful. I think there will be questions, however, I know I have a few. So let me just check in with my fellow commissioners. Catherine, do you have any questions?
I do not, thank you, John.
Okay. Chris, questions?
The windows in section C were original windows or were they replacements of originals to be in before you replaced them again?
Hi, I'm Pedro Ojeda. I'm the owner, I can answer this. So we are not 100% sure. They looked to us as original windows. However, work had been done to them. They no longer had the pulley system on the side. And once you pulled them out, they, they disintegrate into themselves. And that's what Anthony was, was saying, that he, he did not want to restore those.
Just curious, thank you.
No, that's helpful. It's actually important to know that was actually a very critical question, Chris, because we do need to know if you're replacing original windows versus other replacements. And was the material of all of the windows you've removed wood?
Yes, sir.
Okay, great, that's good to know. Let me proceed with Commissioner questions. John Freeman, do you have any questions?
Well, I, I missed the start of this, so I apologize for that. Had some computer problems. I thought I just heard the owner say that the B section could not be restored, but the slide seems to say that they are. And I think the letter from Anthony Greenwood said that that could be restored, that it was the lower, the C that couldn't be restored. But do I have that right?
Then I misspoke, sir. B can and will be restored by Old Bostonian. C, we're gonna replace with two over two windows.
And A, and A is gonna be replaced with two over two windows.
Correct.
Those are the Marvin ultimate.
Yes. Yes, sir.
In both locations?
Yes, sir.
Great, thank you. That's all my questions.
Okay, great. Kevin, do you have any questions? Is, is Kevin muted by BLC staff? He's got his hand raised.
Yeah, sorry, can you hear me now?
Yeah, we can.
Great, thank you. My only question, so this, that, I know that it's listed as a violation. Was it a self-report? Is that how it came to the commission?
We, we did reach out to.
That's correct.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, we did not receive a violation from a constituent. The applicants themselves reported the violation.
Okay. And my other question was asked, so thank you.
Yeah. And I've already asked my questions about the, whether they're original and if the material of the woods that, the windows that have been removed were wood. And Pedro, you've said yes to that. And you're replacing with wood windows or you're restoring the wood windows that were still restorable and putting them back in. Is that correct?
Yes, sir. As soon as we took them out, we put them in storage to preserve them because the intention was always, once we had the, the time and it was in winter and we could schedule with Anthony to restore them, to put them back in. So B, we put them all in storage. And C, we, we no longer have them. Those were pretty bad condition, the first floor. And then A, those aren't historical, so we didn't see the need to keep them. We were intending to replace them.
Okay, great. My, my last question is in the B section, where, where you're putting new storm windows? Are you putting them inside or on the outside?
I am only aware of the ones you could put in on the outside.
There, there are such things as internal storms? And I don't know enough about them, but others on the commission do know more about them. But if you're planning to put on outside ones, I, I think we, we don't regulate that. Is that correct, Rachel?
Yeah, that's correct. We have a recommendation that they be dark. I mean, I want to say, and I feel like we let Pedro and Matt know about that.
Okay, great. Okay, that's the end of my questions. So I think we're ready for Commissioner comments, which is how we'll proceed. So Catherine, any comments?
Nope, I am good. And, and I want to commend them for coming forth. Thank you very much.
Exactly. Thank you for saying that, Catherine. That's exactly right. Thank you so much. And so Kevin, do you have comments?
I do not.
Okay. John, comments?
I think they're doing the right thing.
Yeah. Peter, comments? I think I might have overlooked you for questions, Peter, and I'm sorry about that.
Okay, John, I had no questions anyway, so I thought then. So I have no comments.
Okay. Chris, any comments?
Nope, I appreciate their diligence to the keeping the golden triangle beautiful there.
Yeah. Yeah, perfect. And I'll echo my fellow commissioners by thanking you for coming forth to the commission, taking good care of the windows that were restorable and being able to restore them and putting them back in and putting in the right replacement windows where you couldn't restore the windows that were removed or didn't have appropriate windows to restore. So I, great job. I commend you and thank you for working with the commission. And I hope you'll continue to work with the commission on all future work on your properties. So thank you again. And you can work with staff from here forward. They'll get you a letter that you can use to support your project.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Yeah.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, sure. Oh, we have to vote, right?
Yep, yeah.
We do.
Still need a motion and a vote to ratify the violation.
Right, so I will, I think we're ready for a motion if anybody wants to make one.
I move that we ratify this repair to the violation as, as is.
As presented?
Yes, as presented.
I'll second.
That's great. Okay, we have a second that was Catherine. We ask for a public comment now, right, Rachel?
Um, no, we do not do public comment for violations.
Oh, on violations, okay. Then we can go right to a vote. Catherine?
I.
So we're doing Catherine, but not Kevin at the moment, is that right? Rachel? Okay. Chris?
I.
Peter?
I.
John?
I.
And I vote with the motion, so the motion carries. I, I didn't miss anybody, did I? Rachel?
I think you called everyone.
Okay, great.
And I was the moment, Commissioners.
Great.
I think you got it wrong.
Great, okay. So.
Thank you.
We'll go into, yep, thank you very much. Matt and Pedro.
Yeah.
Thank you for your work keeping South End pretty. Appreciate it.
Back at you. So we'll go into design review right now. So the first application is 31 Braddock Park. The work is to repair or replace an existing unoriginal garden fence. And if the applicant is here, please state your full name and proceed to present.
Oh, my name is Mark Herman. I moved into 31 Braddock Park in 1996 and and that fence was there when we moved in. And it's time to replace it. So I was trying to do it the proper way.
Mark, I have your presentation you submitted. I can flip through it, just tell me next slide.
Oh, next slide. I don't think we need to dwell on these.
Actually, we like to see the existing ones.
Yes, we do.
And working with the Brothers Mariano, we asked them to replace it with a fence that would match the one in the center of the road. Just a little much more substantial square post with a round tops and then half inch by half inch pickets. And also there's a horizontal, what's called, it's a bar stock that connects the, the posts in the corners.
Okay.
And then staff would just like to add that we reached out to the South End Historical Society to see if they had a photo of what the original fence would be or if they had any information. Because unfortunately, the available photos aren't really helpful. It had already been replaced by the time they had been around. And so the South End historian took a look at different photos in Braddock Park and he traced 29 Braddock Park, which is an existing historic photo to some examples on Warren Avenue. And then he traced 33 Braddock Park all the way back to see like what those, what that looked like. And so they, 33 and 29 were different. So that means that 31 could have been either of those options. And so there's two design options that they recommended.
Okay. Who is the they again that recommended that?
Yeah, so the South End Historical Society.
Oh, South End Historical Society, thank you. So fantastic, thank you, Rachel, for that background. So we're going to ask, I'm going to ask my fellow commissioners if they have questions first. And they may have questions. And then after that, we'll go to their, and our comments, which you can respond to if we get to that. So Catherine, do you have any questions?
No, I do not, thank you, John.
Okay. Chris, any questions?
Yes, I do have two questions. Did Historical Society know when this fence might have been replaced? And, and what kind of shape is it in right now? The, the one in the center, I'm sorry, in the center oval.
So this is the fence that they're proposing to replace. They'd like to use that central oval design. And I don't actually know the date.
That's definitely not a 19th century fence.
Right, I did, but I'm just curious because I'm, I'm very familiar with that oval and the fountain and the two ovals, actually. I'm just, you know, just thought, when was it replaced? Because I mean, it was a pretty substantial job to just do those things. And so I was just curious.
Yeah, I actually don't know that.
Okay, was that, was that your question?
That was my two questions, thank you, John.
Okay, sure. Kevin, do you have any questions?
Yeah, sorry, I missed it, Rachel. The historian said what about 29 and 31?
Yeah, so the historian looked and at the photos that the South End Historical Society found. They were under the Brainbridge, Brainbridge bunting photos that were taken in 1941 because the 1972 South End survey did not have a picture of a historic fence at 31 Braddock Park. And so they were able to see through those photos from 1941, fences at 29 and at 33 Braddock Park. They went out on site, like they went into the South End and they were able to see fences that looked closely like 29 Braddock Park on Warren Avenue. It's 177 Warren Avenue and specifically. And then 33 Braddock Park still actually has its original character. And so given that those two are different, it's unclear which 31 Braddock Park would have been, but those are two historical options that the applicant could consider.
Okay, and to be clear, neither of those are what's proposed.
Yes, neither of those are what's proposed. But again, we don't know what the original fence looked like. We can only guess based on what its neighbors had, which they had different fences.
But neither of those two fences, Rachel, look like the fence surrounding Braddock Park's island in the middle. Is that correct?
That's correct.
And so what's being proposed, Kevin, is the fence around the park in the middle of Braddock Park, which is on the screen now.
Yeah, no, I understand that. And my, so my next question then was going to be, did the South End Landmark District Commission approve that fence? The one we're looking at now.
Yeah, so I do not know the answer to that question. And that is, was also Chris's question.
Okay, well, I can, I can tell you that if it was approved by the commission, it was before I was on the commission and before John Freeman was on the commission. And that was 1996 or 1997, February of 97, when we started in the South End. So.
I can add that when I moved in in 96, it was there already.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, I think that's it for me, thanks.
Sure. Peter, any questions? Did I already ask you?
You did. Question both to the applicant and to Rachel. What is the height of the applicant's proposed fence? And to Rachel, what is the height of the two recommended alternatives?
So Mark, I don't know if you have the information on the height of your proposed fence available. I know that was something.
I told them to match the one in the center, but if height is an issue, there's some flexibility there. I believe the two original examples that you, Rachel had said were both very low that you could step over instead of this height.
And that was made a note of by the South End historian. He doesn't think, he thinks the railing was cut down in height, maybe for aesthetic reasons. So the shorter version is probably not the original height. He would, the ideal would be for an applicant to replace at a normal rail, shorter rail height in the South End.
Do we know the, the height, Rachel, of one, one or, one of those two original fences and styles?
So I think the fence at 177 Warren is full height. The ones at 33 Braddock Park are shorter and cut down.
But do we, do we know the actual height of the one at 177?
I do not have that measurement.
Okay. But it can be gotten.
Yes, I can go out and measure it for you.
Okay. So, but on the, on the average, they're around 30 inches above the curb. Is, that's not to say that would be exact everywhere, but that's been sort of an average that we've found. But certain fences have different variations that might vary from that 30 inch. So.
Well, if it's helpful, I can stipulate that they may get 30 inches.
Well, we're, we'll get there. Not to worry. So. Feel like I've missed somebody.
Me.
Freeman.
Oh, John, thank you for piping up.
That's right.
Go ahead, questions?
I don't really have any questions, except I'm a little confused. We don't have an image or a drawing of the proposed fence exactly as it's proposed.
That is correct.
Yes, what we have is the photograph on the screen. Yeah, that's it. So. Okay. So I think we're done with questions. I think we're done with questions. And, John, are you done with questions? Was that it?
Yeah.
Okay, so um we'll go to comments then. Um, John, let's start with you this time since you're on the.
Well, I'll.
On the hot seat.
Ultimately, I'll defer to the expert uh garden fence, John Amadeo. But um I don't, in ter- just in terms of approvals of things. We can approve something if it's an exact copy and a photograph is applied. But when there's variations, I don't think we can approve it without a drawing or something more definitive. And I also wonder if we have two historic models. Um, wh- why not? Is it a financials or cost reason? Why wouldn't you just require one of those? Rather than trying to take an image of the center island and, you know, alter it so it fits into the garden? It it makes sense to me just to follow one of the historic models. And I don't, I I should have asked the question, why aren't we doing that?
Good point. Um, the.
That's my comment.
Yeah, this is Rachel. Um, I I suggested those two options uh to the applicant after I I got that information from the South End Historical Society. Um, and he he still wanted to receive this option, which, you know, is totally, totally up to him. So that is why. Um, and I would like to say that the South End Historical Society just emailed me a photo of Braddock Park it from nineteen forty-one, and there's no fence um surrounding the center. Um, in the street, just if you're still thinking about how old that is.
Right, bear in mind that when the island was built originally, it may have had a fence. Um, fences in the South End were taken down and melted for use in either of the two world wars. So, um, tha- that had happened in the, in that day. So in the nineteen teens and in the early forties, um, it's quite possible that this fence, the original fence in Braddock Park could have been removed. Um, that's what happened to the fence around um Union Park and the fence around Worcester Square. Um, those fences were also around um Franklin Square and Blackstone Square. Um, those were all taken down a- um around World War One period. And then replaced after the war. So uh that may be why there was no fence in the nineteen forty-one um photo. Um, without having done any research, I can only speculate, but it's a possibility. Um, so, uh.
John?
Yeah, go ahead, Peter.
Rachel, could you repeat what you said? Your audio distorted. So, did you say you offered the alternatives to the applicant? And. He. You remain with the preference shown in the photograph?
Um, yes, that is correct.
Okay, thank you.
So, um, Peter, having said that, uh, I'll come to you for comments.
My comment is number one, I don't know the condition of his existing fence, but I don't see that what he's proposing is even a substantial improvement over what is exist- what is existing. And I, I think it's been the commission's policy when reviewing fences, except for new construction, uh, to try to look at, look for historical antecedents and um that's what I would want to see to approve something.
Okay, thank you, Peter. Um, uh, Chris, any comments?
Yeah, I I agree that there's not a lot of uh historical or even two fences that seem alike on this street on Braddock Park. And um, but I bet that kind of surprised me a little bit. But I was looking uh Google Maps and twenty-two uh Braddock Park seems to have a fairly historical, as I would call it, uh, appropriate, it seems, uh, fence. You know, a lot of other ones are shorter. Uh, some of them match the uh newel, the the uh brownstone newels at the base of the stairs. Um, it looks like there's a mishmash. But uh it seems like there's a lot of other good precedents, even on that street that we could look at.
Mm-hmm. Plus, we have the very helpful information from the South End Historical Society's historian. So, uh, okay, um, any further comment, Chris?
Uh, good, thanks.
Okay, uh, Kevin, do you have any comments?
No, I don't.
Okay, Catherine, any comments?
No.
Or did I ask you? No?
No, you did not. But I think I'd like to rely on the staff recommendations, you know, and what the South End Historical Society says.
Yeah, I I concur, Catherine. Um, our, our staff recommendations in, um, which you don't know yet, Mark, but I'll let you know what they are, is that um, uh, that we deny this without prejudice, which allows you to come back to us with a more appropriate application. Um, following some of the recommendations staff has already given you. Um, so, um. Uh, and and, you know, John, you know, very um graciously said he would defer to me, but I have nothing more to offer other than to follow the staff recommendations and the recommendations of the South End Historical Society's historian, um, which provided us those historic precedents that we could follow as a model here. And and there's no reason to not use those in this instance um since we have them. Um, or or to come up with a fence design that very closely replicates those models. Um, so, um.
Um, can I, I just want to be clear on one, because most of the examples, I believe, in the photos that uh Rachel shared were only about eighteen inches high. Uh, uh, they were both the kind that you could step over and we don't, we would prefer, and I think someone had mentioned that thirty inches is a, is a.
Yeah, that's what we would do, Mark. W- we already have determined that the eighteen inch height fence was probably cut down from its original height by the, you know, a past owner who for had reasons to do that, but I don't understand what they might have been, but they did. Um, no, the more common height is higher than eighteen inches. So, um.
Well, that was, uh, when I brought the photos, uh, I should have said this to the other members of the condominium association, that was their uh, the the component or the portion of it that they reacted to.
Well.
So it may be further discussion, we can find, uh.
That's right. I think staff can help you with that. I think it's already been determined by the historian at South End Historical Society that the fence at one seventy-seven Warren Ave is very similar style to the ones that were originally to, at least one that was originally found on Braddock Park in a historic photo. Um, that is at its full height. Um, and Rachel couldn't tell us what that height was, but it can be measured and we can let you know what it is. But it's likely, you know, the the more average height of thirty inches or somewhere around there. So.
I'm s- I'm sorry, can you repeat the address? It's Warren Ave.
One seventy-seven.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, and so you can, you know, de- depending on what the motion is, and I'm going to ask for a motion right now. Um, you know, you can, if we're going to move forward with this, you can work with staff. So um hang on, Mark, and we'll take a motion and we'll get public comment if there is any, and then we'll come back to you in a sec. So I think we're ready for a motion. Um, if anybody would like to do so. Peter, would you like to make a motion?
Sure. I move that um we deny the application without prejudice.
Okay, do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and it's been seconded. I'll ask for public comment. Members of the public will now have an opportunity to ask questions and provide public comment on the application and discussions. To do so, please raise your hand via the Zoom meeting platform. If you're calling in and cannot use the platform, you can press star nine to raise your hand. Or you can send your questions to staff via email at southendldc@boston.gov. And um Sarah, do we have any written comments or anybody raising their hand?
We did not receive any written public comment, and I don't see any hands raised.
Okay, uh, then we'll go right to a vote. Um, uh, Peter. You still with us, Peter? Oh, there you are. Peter? Hi. Your vote? Okay, great. Uh, Kevin?
Uh, I'm not voting.
Oh, that's right. I'm sorry. Catherine?
Hi.
Uh, John?
Hi.
Chris?
Hi.
And the chair votes with the motion, so the motion carries. So, um. You can work, um, Matt, it's Matt, right? You can work with staff moving forward. And uh, and uh, you know, goo- good luck and we hope to see you back.
Thank you.
Yeah, Mark.
Oh, Mark, sorry.
Yeah, Mark, feel free to connect with me via email and we can talk about the two options. And I can go out and measure the fence. Um, just be in touch and we can work.
I'm probably going to walk over there right now.
I I got the impression you would, Mark.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, take good care, good luck. Um, we'll go to the next item on the agenda, which is one fifty-eight West Concord Street. And the proposed work is to remove existing concrete entry walk and replace with brick and granite. Uh, install ornamental wrought iron railing at entry stairs. And there are additional items under administrative review.
Okay.
And if, if the applicant's here, please give us your full name and and Rachel can run the slideshow for you.
Hey, Clayton, you should be a co-host now.
Yes, hello, everyone. How are you?
Good.
Thank you. Good, thank you so much for um hearing from us tonight. I'm Clayton Richardson. I'm here with um Judge Kelton Smith, Architecture, representing the owners of one fifty-eight West Concord Street. Um, so yeah, uh, we have a presentation tonight. I'll probably ask Rachel to flip through pretty quickly so we can stay um focused on topics that are kind of relevant to this conversation um for this design review. So, thank you. Um, we're looking at replacing and um redesigning a bit of the front yard and the front entry walk for this um building. So here you can just see an existing plan showing the existing concrete entry walk and the existing curb to be kind of replaced, removed. Um, so next slide, please. And then this is just a look at the existing facade. Thank you. And then, yep, here we are looking at some of the existing photographs of this front entry. So currently, there is no wrought iron railing, but as you can see from the curb, um, there is evidence that it was once there. Um, and you can see in that right photo, a little bit more clearly, the concrete entry walk that we're looking to um replace. Next slide, please. So this is, um, oop, sorry, went back. Thank you.
Yeah, um, Clayton, note that this um part of the um thin thirty-inch-high wrought iron railing, that part is already admin. The only part of your railing that's still talked about is the decorative ones by the.
Okay, I thought so. So we can just skip that completely right now. Great. Um, so looking at the proposed plan here, this kind of highlights our design for the front entry walk. So we've proposed a mix mainly of the red brick. Um, and then strips of granite that kind of break up the entry walk. Um, and as a side note, Rachel, I did put together um just a couple images that can show relative, relevant um site context. Um, if possible, if I could share my screen after this presentation, just for a couple minutes.
Sure.
Um, okay, great. Um, so yeah, that's showing the red um brick and granite entry walk that we've proposed. Um, and next slide, please. Uh, one more, please. And in this section, you can see on the stairs, the wrought iron kind of ornamentation that we've proposed um that will kind of attach to the building and take place on those stairs. Now, um, I can share my screen to show some of the images we put together. All right. So in reference to the entry walk, um, we weren't able to find um, at least on Concord Street or any of the kind of close by streets this same design that we have proposed with this multiple strips of granite. But oh, there's a lot of evidence of this strip of granite taking place as a divider between the front entry walk and the sidewalk. So we kind of used this as inspiration and just expanded on this design a little bit to um get to what we had kind of proposed and shown in this application. Um, and then secondly, to look at that wrought iron ornamentation on the stairs. This is looking at one forty-eight West Concord Street, just um ten units down from one fifty-eight. And this shows um in the left-hand picture, a look at that wrought iron ornamentation taking place on the side of the stairs. Um, and we do recognize that it's a bit of a different stair construction than what's occurring at one fifty-eight. Um, but you can see in this left-hand picture, that right stoop is exactly what's taking place. So we figured if it's happening in the same street, we might be able to utilize that design. And in the right-hand picture, you can see this is one fifty-eight West Conference Street, um, our residents that we're working on. And there is evidence of wrought iron railing, at least on the right side of that entry um, dying into there. So we figured we made as well um reintroduce some wrought iron ornamentation to that location. So that is our presentation and I'm very open to hearing some questions and comments from everyone. Thank you.
Okay. Um. So I'll uh first ask questions of the commissioners. So Catherine, any questions?
Yes, uh, Clayton, you mentioned the evidence that there had been some ornamental railing there or a piece. Uh, is the evidence, the, some holes that you see there, they were sort of visible in the?
Yeah, that's really the only evidence. And I'm not sure if it was a similar ornamentated design that's kind of shown further down on some of the neighboring buildings. But that's, that's all we could tell was that there at some point was a wrought iron connection.
I s- I see. I wonder if we have any sort of historic evidence of that, Rachel?
A good question.
Yeah, so um in the photo, the historic photo that was found, there was no fence. That's from the nineteen seventy-two survey. Um. I will say that the scars on the building are new evidence from us for staff. So that's like kind of exciting because that could indicate that it did have those um types of rails in the past. Uh, but unfortunately, the historic photo does not show any.
One fifty and one fifty-two, um, I'm just surveying Google Street View. One fifty and one fifty-two seem to have an almost identical entry, and it's the garden fence that connects.
Right, not a separate little piece.
Correct.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, and then just another quick question, Clayton. You mentioned the uh granite strip and showed an example of that and said that you just, you know, it sort of went beyond that to to it as a divider up the length of the walk. Did you find any examples where that had been done or this was your uh creation to just add more uh strips of granite?
This, working with the the owner who was interested in this design, we kind of proposed and created this um, this look. But no, the most we could find was just a granite strip separating the entry walk from the sidewalk.
Okay, thank you very much. Thanks, John.
Um, uh, Peter, uh, any co- uh questions?
No questions. Thank you.
And um, uh, Kevin, any questions?
Um, just a quick question, Rachel, not to put you on the spot, but you, so you mentioned that starring was new to staff. Um, like. Like, new today or, or that was considered within your recommendation?
So that's new information for staff today. Another staff member worked on this application. And then Clayton, I think, actually called us yesterday, kind of asking some more questions. And so I let him know what our concerns were. So he, I think it seems like was able to go out and try to find some historic evidence by noting the building scars.
Correct.
Okay. Does that answer your question, Kevin?
Yeah.
Did you have any more questions?
I don't think it's fair to ask Rachel a follow-up, so I'm not going to.
Okay. Appreciate your fairness. John, questions?
No questions.
Chris?
Yes, I do. You said you were going to remove the, the curb on the front of the garden area. Is it broken? Is it just submerged? Is, are you going to replace it with something?
So, yeah, for the curb itself, there's one portion of it that runs along the entry walk that's just stone bricks and that will be removed and replaced with a new stone curb. The curb that runs along the sidewalk and then 156's entry next door is in good condition. And we were imagining just taking those, cleaning them and flipping the curbing and replacing it in the exact same spot it was.
They've probably sunk over the years. You could pry them up and put stuff underneath them.
Yeah, I did notice that. Currently, it's only a few inches above the sidewalk compared to a lot of the others down the street.
Good. That's good. The side, yes, the sidewalk where it's parallel, it seems like it was in good condition, so.
It is, yeah.
Oh, is that the Running Rose handrail that you were proposing? Which is, you know, South End norm?
Sorry, can you say the beginning?
Is that the, the pattern for that curvy rail that you want to put? Is that the Running Rose? Is that from the, you know, that's a very common one in the South End?
Yes, yeah, that design was taken directly from others that are, you know, right across the street from 158.
Thank you.
And just reminding everyone that the curb around the garden rail is being reviewed administratively and not part of our vote today.
We're talking the curvy one that goes up, the short little piece that goes up the stairs?
Right, I was referring to the curb around the garden that you were asking about. That, that's part of administrative review, so we won't be voting on that item until we vote to approve administrative review later. So, we'll go to comments. Chris, as long as you were last speaking, any comments?
I have none, thank you.
Okay. John, comments?
Sure, I'll just a couple of quick comments. One, I think it's a very nice proposal, very nice presentation, and I really appreciate that. I always think it's absolutely wonderful when architects try to work within the historic vocabulary and try to come up with new things. And I think you, you, what you did is really nice presentation, but unfortunately, I think that we need to follow the historic model that we know exists for this. So, as much as I might like, like the fact that you do that, I think we need a straight brick sidewalk and I think we need a garden rail that's similar to whatever the number was, is it 50? And that is, that is down the block that would appear to me to be the same kind of railing that this building would have had.
Hmm. I think the, I think the garden rail is being reviewed administratively, though.
Oh.
John, is that correct, Rachel?
I thought it was just the curb. And I didn't understand that.
No, the only part of the, is, that we are talking about of the rail is the curly part.
Yeah, okay, I think there would seem to be evidence to me that that is not what would have been originally done, that it was the railing that attached directly to the building.
Hmm.
I still think it's nice when you try to work within the vocabulary, though.
Yeah. Agreed. And Catherine, any comments?
No, thank you.
Peter, comments?
Following up on John Freeman's comment, I would be inclined to suggest that we either continue this application or deny this portion of the application without prejudice and ask the applicant to give us evidence that there are similar configurations. And he showed evidence of one, I guess elsewhere on the street, but it was, we don't know, number one, if it was original, but it was also four steps rather than two steps between the garden fence and the pilaster. So I think we need evidence before we could approve the Rose railing on the steps. Also, I think that the question about was there one there originally is increased, I think, by the fact there's no evidence of it being on the left side, only some attachment on the right side.
Right, which, thank you, Peter, which suggests to me all the more that it was only the garden rail that connected with the building and that there was no supplemental ornamental piece flanking both sides of the steps. Plus, the, the placement of the holes in the granite on the face of the building that was circled by the applicant's photograph suggests to me that they, the top, the highest mark in the granite looked higher than what would be where the Running Rose ornamental rail would hit the building, which yet again suggests it was the garden rail that connected to the building and not some separate ornamental piece. So, I would be inclined, like you, Peter, to follow the staff recommendations to deny without prejudice. But saying that, I want to also echo John Freeman's comments about, Clayton, your diligence towards using historical materials within the district. That's much appreciated. And, but I will also echo John's favor of simplicity because we don't have evidence that patterned paving, such as you're providing, proposing, was typical of the period. Particularly the ladder rung pattern of granite bands across the path. I'd be inclined to accept the granite threshold, but then having a plain, you know, brick walkway to the building, I think it sets off the granite steps even more, not to have granite repeated along the length of the path. So that would be my suggestion. The applicant showed examples of where granite thresholds existed. Of course, we don't know if they're original and I don't see how we could ever know. But I, I think that would be an acceptable embellishment if it were an embellishment and, but having the rest of the path proceed as plain brick. So that would be my recommendation, my comment. And I think, being the last comment, I think we're ready for a motion.
I'll make the motion. I move that we deny the small ornamental handrail without prejudice and in agreement with John, accept the granite curb at the curb line next to the sidewalk and the brick throughout the rest of the sidewalk.
Is that everything?
I think it is.
Okay.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion. It's been seconded. And we'll go to public comment now before we take a vote. Members of the public will now have an opportunity to ask questions and provide public comment on the application and discussions. To do so, please raise your hand via the Zoom meeting platform. If you're recalling in and cannot use the platform, you can press star nine to raise your hand or you can send your questions to staff via email at southendldc@Boston.gov. And Sarah, do we have any written comments by email or anybody raising their hand?
So we did not receive any written public comment and I don't see any hands raised.
Okay, great, thank you. So we'll go to a vote then. Chris?
Hi.
John?
Hi.
Catherine?
Hi.
Peter?
Hi.
And the chair votes with the motion, so the motion carries. So, thank you very much, Clayton. I hope you'll come back to us with, you know, a further resolution to this and we look forward to seeing you back if you do come back to us.
Absolutely. Thank you all for your time and consideration. Really appreciate it and your hard work.
Sure thing.
All right. Thank you.
Good night.
Good night. So, the next item on the agenda is 1767 to 1769 Washington Street. The work is to amend the application 23.0155 that was approved with the provisos at the 12, December 6, 2022 public hearing with an extension approved at the November 6, 2024 public hearing. And this is to renovate and restore the historic Alexandra Hotel building and recreate and/or refurbish original historic design elements. On the adjacent parcel, the proposal is to build a five-story addition. And I believe we saw this in advisory in a prior meeting. Is that correct, Rachel?
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you. So if the applicant is here, we're ready whenever you are.
All right. Good evening, everyone. My name is Pavel Hans, Development Manager for the Alexandra Partners. We have several members of our team here, so I'll just do a quick intro and then pass it off to D'Artagnan Brown from Embark to walk us through the deck. We're very excited to be here tonight. As you may remember, we were on the advisory review for the March 4 hearing, presenting an amendment to the existing approved application. So, the previous approved application consisted of a 155-room hotel, preservation of the existing facade with a 13-story addition. The revised plans now consist of a more of a restoration and renovation of the existing Hotel Alexandra with a addition matching the existing building. And what this allows the team to do is now pursue historic tax credits. So since we have met with the commission last, we've actually received Part 1 approval, both federal and state for historic tax credits. And last week, we submitted our Part 2 application for the historic tax credits as well, kicking off, as many of you may know, a very rigorous process with review by both the National Park Service and Mass Historical Commission. So we're very excited with this iteration of the project. We feel like we have great momentum now. And we look forward to hearing your comments on the design tonight. And with that, I'll pass it over to D'Artagnan Brown.
Awesome. Thanks, Pavel. And good evening all, D'Artagnan with Embark. If you don't mind, Rachel, could I screen share?
Totally.
Awesome. Thank you. Can everyone see this?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, awesome. As Pop mentioned, we're excited to present tonight. I think we're, we had the great advisory meeting and think we're in a really good spot to see this project come to life. Quick reminders, and we'll just run through this, can certainly go back, but just citing the building on the corner of Washington and Mass Ave. Here is the existing structure as it is today with the old Ivory Bean site for the future infill that we have some more detail on. A couple of quick views around the neighborhood, site perspectives back to the historic structure. And then just some of the more prominent milestones and approval processes. This building went through a couple of key things to note and Pop mentioned it is the work to the historic facade will really remain intact on what was previously approved and reviewed by this commission. We also have Colleen with us tonight who can talk in more detail on that. But we are looking to preserve that great effort and then have the revised design approach for the infill portion. So here is a rendering, which I'm sure you'll remember, in the prior approval. We are looking now to seek an amendment to removing the tower from the existing structure up and then taking kind of refined pass at the infill to, to really play off and complement the existing building. A quick comparison chart, just a reminder of where we were both in terms of 13 stories, nearly 170 feet. We're dropping down to the 6910, so within the 70-foot height limitation within the Landmarks District. That will drop us down to 68 rooms. We are keeping the ground floor restaurant and cafe. And then within it have the amenities similar to what we did also in compliance with the BTD guidelines. Quick update, or quick photos on the existing structure. So we walked through the building several times. Happy to note that it's still very much salvageable and with the historic tax credits and the purview that we'll have, we do look forward to bringing back the grandeur of this building. A couple of key things to note we'll talk about too is just the, the ability to preserve the, the kind of stoop entries to the ground floor restaurant because we have managed to deal with the accessibility through the new infill structure. And then just some more of the detailing around and through the building. You'll, you'll see some of the window proportions and kind of the spring arch that we are looking to bring into the new addition as well. And as we continue to wrap around the site. And then the existing site plan, the proposed site plan, which again is following the exact same footprints from prior. We've gone through Boston PPDA, now Boston Design, just making sure all of the kind of larger community benefits and street work is in accordance to what we had before. And then as we go through coming off the ground level, so as I mentioned, these two stoop entries will stay with this change in program. As mentioned, we are going to, this is more of a restoration renovation, so all of the floor structure, the demising walls, kind of that grand stair in the center will remain. We have the entry to the hotel through a cafe lobby that gets us the accessible half stop up to serve the restaurant. And then within the basement level, we've reduced that footprint as being mindful of the party wall condition next door. Really back of house fitness supporting spaces for the hotel use. We've kept a lot of the access off a common place in the back, the same. And then we have the new infrastructure going up. But in this proposal, really having the elevator and stair in the addition versus before it was inside the existing footprint. As we move up, we have the mix of keys. And then the top here, we've made a decision to kind of really just have mechanical equipment at the top, which would be in a screen enclosure as we get through that, but removing the need to go through a roof deck and kind of just taking that off the plate, which is a little bit different than what we had before when we last met you. I think, John, you kindly reminded us that this is a category A site, so we've taken a moment to step back and having had the nice experience with you guys in 1395 Washington, which if you've seen is under construction and well underway, using that and the kind of process we ran with you to really help define what is a category, say, category A site, what does it mean to be a South End building? We've gone through and highlighted the major guidelines that we are looking to use in terms of one, heights and how it correlates with the contributing building. So in this case, being the Alexandra, pulling that across. The setbacks, both in terms of footprint and kind of the relative adjacency to the facade with the contributing building. And then design features, which we'll talk about in the next slide, but how we can do a modern take, but being respectful to the building, the contributing building as well. And then the lot coverage, again, occupying the full width of the site, which again, we're preserving the footprints from prior approval. So within that, what we heard and we're kind of tying that back to the category A guidelines is number one up here with the corner side, we've done a very clean extraction. And I'll zoom in here, can see Catherine looking, just make sure you can see it. Bringing a very clean extrapolation. Bringing a very clean extrapolation of the cornice line across to the building. As we move down, we've kind of reworked all of the windows that look similar, but we've gone through and really made sure that we have sill and headlight sill and heads aligning with the windows adjacent in the existing structure. And then we've also looked at the width of the fenestration playing off of the two sizes that are in existing building. So in this case, we're doing kind of a ABBA window ganging and on the existing structure, it's ABA. So having a little bit of a playful take on that, but really looking at the proportionality of these windows and how those carry through onto our proposal here. And then on the base, so moving down through the window fenestration proportions, hitting the base, looking at the same language of the existing arches, and we did actually carry that around the corner where there's a nice moment when you walk into the cafe lobby and can look back to the front of the activated restaurant retail spell out space here. So part of that massing strategy was looking at the primary facade and how that's coplanar in nature. But as we come down to the ground floor, we're looking at that retail expression tying into the first floor on the adjacent building. So all of that in terms of kind of a massing approach is from the prior, but we thought just useful to reiterate it here. And then you can also see we removed the roof deck on the top, which I think it just simplifies the process, simplifies the construction aspect of getting this built. So that will be enclosed house mechanical, which will, you know, have set within the footprint. And then from here on the right side, you can see the window A, B kind of language as it moves down the facade and a little bit more of a contemporary take to the existing fenestration. So moving into an updated rendering, so here we're calling out for just a beautiful palette of bronze anodized aluminum in a two-tone. So we have kind of a dark bronze in the metal panel that will make up the facade with both the glass and the spandrel panel. And then a muted darker bronze, that's this filigree which detail, which is a kind of a steel cut laser that's laid on top of the spandrel, which I'll talk about in a moment. And then as we come down to the ground floor here, you can see the continuity of that expression coming across our site. We have the, these arches that play off of the existing here. And we've picked up here on the side, so there's a really nice movement across the front of the facade here. Zoom back out. And then in terms of the filigree, what we looked at is both, this is an example from the Boston Public Library. Both this building and the Alexandra are from the late nineteenth century, kind of European-inspired architecture. And what we liked was just this kind of Greek Roman revival approach to a really clean detailing of, in this case, metalwork that adorned the front of these windows. And we're looking to use that as the motif for these accent panels here that are over the spandrel, really to just have a beautiful casting of shadow and bring a little bit of that detailing back up to our new proposal here. In terms of just views, you can see here again off of the corner of Washington and Mass Ave. And then as we zoom in and come around, we have a quick thing on signage, but really looking to have minimal signage just on the entry here and then up on the corner along Mass Ave that was previously approved, which I'll get into in a second. Here you can see the overlay of the filigree detail. And then this is a view from Comet Place looking back. So the approach for the secondary facades was really to go simple and and truly secondary, so we're not competing with the grandeur of the front of the building and the complimenting addition. So here you can see again sill heights, window fenestrations, entry piece. The level and rigor of detailing on the restoration of the facade, all remains, and Colleen again will touch upon that. And then as we move to Comet Place in the side, going for a much simpler panel facade approach, so that we're treating this really as secondary facades. And then in terms of the signage here, we have just called out for the restaurant signage in the space here above the doors, and we definitely come back with actual signage, you know, once we get a tenant and go through that, but really taking cue to what was approved previously, both for the hotel signage and then the restaurant signage at each of these entries. In terms of lighting, so again, previously approved, the great thing with Tom Jazz and the team is we're carrying all of this work forward for the existing structure and then complementing that on the proposed entry here. But really not looking to bring the lighting up this new addition. It's really just at the entry to denote entrance to the hotel and then keeping what was approved for the existing structure. And that itself carries around to the Mass Ave side. And with that, I'm going to pop it over to Colleen and then take it from there.
Good evening. So just speaking a little bit to the restoration of this, this this is a great opportunity to really kind of restore this building and all its, all its eccentricities, the cresting on the roof, the railings at various levels, the polychromatic stone, sandstone and brownstone. And of course, restoring the storefront entrances. This is a really great opportunity to kind of restore that grandeur to this corner and get breathed life back into it. So based on eighteen ninety-nine photos, we're really excited about how much detail we have the opportunity to restore here.
And I think with that, we'd love to turn it back to the commission and again, thank you for your time.
Yeah, thank you, D'Artagnan and Colleen for your presentation. It's, I sometimes have to pinch myself to convince myself that I'm not dreaming that we're actually here. So thank you. And I'm going to ask commissioners for questions first, and then we'll go to comments before we take public comment. So Catherine, do you have any questions?
Just a, just a quick one, D'Artagnan. Is that a green roof proposed on the top of the entry there for the new building?
We are working on that with the idea that it's like a sedum tray. I'm personally pushing for it. I think it would be quite attractive if, you know, if we can get it to work, we have to understand the fenestration coming out. I think we can route through the main addition, but just because you're going to have the views down onto the building and from surrounding, we thought it's a great opportunity to do something special there.
Yeah, but low, are you thinking?
Very low. Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you. Oh, and that addition also has rooms within it, hotel rooms, right?
Oh, yes. Yeah. Yeah, that, that has rooms and the elevator and the stair.
Yes, thank you.
It's got about a quarter, you know, maybe thirty percent of the rooms in that portion.
Oh, okay. Thank you. That's it.
Thank you.
Okay. Great. Thank you, Catherine. Peter, any questions?
Yeah, I have a couple. On the existing building, on the second through fifth floor, are the windows actually going to be double hung? Or are they going to have the appearance of being double hung windows?
Correct me if I'm wrong, team, but they are double hung, but with limiters just for safety.
Yeah, that's correct.
Correct. Yeah, in the existing building, yes.
Yeah, and they'll be, you know, again, I think in Colleen or our team can talk to us, just going through the historic tax credits. We'll have to make sure they're historically accurate profiles, et cetera.
One hundred percent, yes.
Okay, thank you. And my second question is on the filigree screening.
Yes.
So there's a void between them and the solid wall. Is that correct?
Correct. So it'll be spaced off about an inch, inch and a half, which you have the spandrel window. Let me, and I'll go back to this, Peter, right here. So you'll have a spandrel window behind, which receives the demising wall, you know, between keys. And then this is with spacers in front of that. So we get a nice kind of relief on similar to what was in the precedence, you know, done in here.
Yeah.
You know, these were applied, same kind of approach.
And is there a contrast in color or tone for the screen in the spandrel wall itself?
Yes, because the spandrel will be rough, you know, it's essentially back painted glass. And then we'll have a matted, let me go back to it, a matted kind of dark bronze cut. So there'll be a nice play between the shiny surface and then the matte cut metal.
Hey, thank you.
Thanks, Peter.
Any further questions, Peter?
No.
Okay. Kevin, any questions?
Just from the, from the March presentation to now, is there, I guess, I'm not noticing any major design changes. Is that correct or am I missing significant changes?
There's a lot, Kevin. It's around the refinement of the window fenestration, the head and sill heights. And we also did, jokes aside, we did remove the roof deck and headhouse overrun, which was quite significant to take that off. So we're avoiding any need to, you know, check for sightlines and roof deck railings, et cetera.
Okay. Thank you. I'm good, John.
Okay, thanks, Kevin. John, questions?
Just one, really. D'Artagnan, could you zoom in or focus on one of your larger perspectives? I just want to make sure I understand what is in plane with what on the Washington Street. So, yes.
Yep. So can you see this, John? Yeah, so this, I'm going to zoom in here. This is all coplanar. Except we have a, like a one-point inset at the connective piece because you can see the return of the, you know, the brick and the party wall in the existing. And then this lower level is coplanar with the abutting retail to the left.
So there's no, oh, so your building doesn't have any setbacks?
No, and it's matching exactly the same building outline that was previously on the tower, except the tower kept going.
Is there anything like the parapet line on the on the Alexandra that's proud on your building?
No.
Nothing like that. You're keeping, it's all plus or minus an inch or so in plane. Okay.
Yeah, yeah. And what we've done here, John, at the top, is we're taking the same datum lines, but we're doing kind of a nice clean extrusion of that cornice, you know, in lieu of, you know, stone cornice.
Yeah, but the cornice with the dentals or whatever that is there is expressed in the Alexandra. Yours isn't, is in plain flush with below.
Correct.
Okay. All right, cool.
Yeah.
All I wanted to make sure I understood.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other questions, John?
Nope, that's it for me.
Okay, Chris, questions?
I have two questions that I apologize. I'm actually sorry that I didn't have, I wasn't around for the March fourth advisory because it looks like they, everybody did a great job. Good job. The first question is, and I don't know all the background for it, but the roof deck was removed. I always find those are very lively addition to a neighborhood, but it was removed because of, for what reasons?
Pop, if you want to jump in, or I can talk both, but two things I think around code because we'd have to bring accessibility up to the roof deck. So you have two stairwells, elevator, elevator, headhouse. There'd be a lot of sightlines and then to do that, the cost around getting, because we'd be over the seventy feet between high rise, and it just started getting very complicated as we were starting to really get to a point of saying, you know, how do we make this project feasible? And that, that was just a large ticket item that as nice as it would be to have a roof deck, it just was starting to, you know, put us over the threshold on, on being smart about the dollars here.
I appreciate that. Thank you for that. And the second question is, I've been watching this building for the past thirty-three years since I arrived in the South End. And my question to you is, as a contractor, as a South End preservationist, as a builder, when can I get a tour?
We can go tomorrow morning if you like.
I would love to. I live in the South End, right around the corner. I've done so much work. I would love to see that before. But that's a site.
Tom and Jazz and Pop, it may be fun to do like a hard hat tour of before and after, if anyone in the commission was interested. It's gorgeous, as you can imagine, and I think part of this proposal where, you know, I'm personally excited about is a lot of that interior grandeur is able to stay because we're not doing a facadeectomy like we had on the prior proposal. So it may be cool to have a group of individuals that are interested to take a look before the
I would love that. Thank you for that offer. It's on tape.
Yeah, it might be a little bit difficult to do a group just because the building conditions are still
Yeah, or a couple.
Very delicate inside, so soft floors and
Yeah, or maybe when some of the, when it's made safe or we'll figure it out, of course.
As someone who's been fortunate enough to go in several times as part of this whole process, it is a, you know, the building's been abandoned for fifty years and it's
There's a lot of pitch.
We wish it was in better shape.
I'm sure, but I remember I asked just for myself. If the group, yeah, I'll go, but if the group can go, I'd love that too, but I'd love to, that's high on my list.
Well, some of us did that many years ago, and I have no interest in doing it again.
It'll come at the end, Catherine, when it's done.
Yeah, exactly.
Catherine, you'll get the, you'll get the tour before it opens.
That'd be fantastic.
Preview.
The hard hat tour of the completed building.
Yeah. That would be great. I want to be there. Okay. Chris, is that it for your questions?
Just to repeat that, but that was it. Thank you.
Yeah. Well, also, I think we can go into comments now. So Chris, do you have any comments?
Thank you. I, 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 I so love the preservation of these things and that that's going to be there and not fall down is, makes me very happy. Thank you.
Okay. John, do you have any comments?
Yes, I think, D'Artagnan, you have made a lot of changes. I'm sorry, Kevin, to the proposed building. And I think you all listened carefully to what we were looking for. I felt last time almost like I shouldn't make any suggestions. And when other commissioners did, I was like, don't, don't, don't do anything that'll make them stop. But I, but you really have made positive changes. I think it's moved in exactly the direction that it needed to move. And I think this is a great presentation and a great proposal. Thank you.
Perfect.
All of you, the whole team, not just, I know D'Artagnan didn't do it on his own.
I didn't do any of it. I just got to help present it. No, I'm kidding. We have a super team and Cindy, Younga, Carlos and Mike Ron that all helped put this together and make it come to life.
Great. Before I ask for further comments, I forgot that I myself have two questions and didn't get a chance to ask them, so I'm going to do that now. D'Artagnan, you mentioned earlier that while the roof deck is out, there are going to be mechanicals up on the roof.
Yes.
Have you shown us a plan where those mechanicals will live?
We have not yet because we're working through that with our MEP consultant on a couple of different pathways to heat and cool the building. It will be inbound kind of over the central core and then within an acoustic enclosure well set in. It's just, you know, something and maybe any one of our team or we can certainly follow up separately on that, but that's getting through the infrastructure of the building is top of our list now. Part of removing the roof deck also ensures that we can put everything into the center of the building for sightline visibility and, you know, the sensitivity around that.
Yeah, I think I can just chime in here. I think, you know, with especially, you know, not to keep on going back to the separate historic tax credit process that is ongoing, but, you know, they look at these things with equal rigor. So, you know, we saw the challenge of basically putting a roof deck on there. So, you know, we saw the challenge of basically uh putting a roof deck on their mechanical systems. You know, while also not, you know, having these sightlines visible from the, the public way. So the decision was made to basically eliminate the roof deck and allow enough space to set these mechanical systems back where they're not visible.
Hmm, thank you, Paul, um, much appreciated. And um, my second question is, is the building, um, are you confident that the building is currently stabilized for the winter? Or do you have plans to stabilize it until you actually go into construction?
The, uh, I can take that question, the building is stable right now, we, we do ongoing preventative maintenance, you know, but. For example, I was just there the other week, we discovered a, a leak in the roof. So, you know, we have a contractor that, you know, we, we bring in and we monitor the building to ensure its stability. And um, you know, ensure that it doesn't deteriorate any more than it has.
That's great, we've gotten this far, we wouldn't want to see it fall down before you get to do your wonderful project. Um, so that's great.
Honestly, John, we probably want to go into construction before the winter, so.
A hundred percent.
Even, even better.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you, um, thank you, Jazz. So um, I'll uh continue with questions, uh, comments now, I'm sorry, um, Catherine, comments?
Uh, yes, I, I really like the elegant detail around the windows, that's really quite a lovely uh touch. I wonder about, and perhaps it's this angle of the rendering, but it's still. And believe me, I don't want to cause problems, uh, but the entry seems in this view to look rather. Uh, there we go, that's better. In the other angle, it looks more fortress-like and very heavy. And, and I guess it is just, anybody else have that thought?
Um, Catherine, you were referring to the um addition entrance?
I'm sorry, yes, 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 I'm, I'm talking about, yeah, I, I'm not gonna say anything about the Alexandra. I mean, you know, Colleen and the team, everybody has done a fabulous job, this is gonna be a wonderful revelation, wonderful.
They know what they're doing.
Yeah, yeah, they sure do. So focusing on the addition, this angle is much more pleasing to me and reassuring.
Yeah, agreed.
That it seems to be much more compatible with what's going on above it.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, I think um, that's a great observation, Catherine, this is our intent here to have something that's invigorating to come in. There's a lot of glass, um, lighting from within, the bronze nature of the material. I think the other one is maybe a skewed perspective and camera lighting.
Yeah.
We'll certainly be doing, as we're done with you guys before, we'll look at mockups and color, you know, all of that. But we, we do want this to be energized, because this is the main entry to the hotel. Uh, so we will ensure that it has the vibrancy that's needed to, to support the use.
And I think the dusk shot really conveys that quite well, that was.
Yeah, you start to see that light come through and.
Yeah, yeah, that was, that was a great image.
Yeah.
Well, well done, thank you, that's it for me.
Mm-hmm, okay, um, thank you, Catherine, um, Kevin, do you have any comments?
Nope, thanks.
Okay, um, Peter, do you have any comments?
Um, yeah, I think it's very exciting to see that this is being done as a certified rehab project for the existing building. And I, regarding the main entry, I share Catherine's concern. And I just wonder, is it possible to increase the height at all for that archway? Because even from this angle.
Yeah, like somewhat diminished. Yeah, I can draw this, um, like pull this up like that.
Yeah, it, I agree with Peter, it looks a little on the squat side. And the, the increased height would, I think, match the verticality of the entrances in the Alexandra.
Exactly. Proportion.
Right, tha- thank you for calling that out, Peter.
Yeah. More than happy to make that adjustment, and I think if it's okay, you know, seeing how this um plays out. That's something we can deal with, um, Rachel and Steph on just submitting supplemental. So we don't hold this up, you know, just supplemental design material. But I, but I agree, Peter, I think that's a great comment, it'll bring a little bit more of that vertical proportion. And.
Right.
Greater, you know, emphasis to that entry.
If, if, may I have any comment too, John, in, in playing off that, because I didn't want to say anything either, because I wasn't here for the advisory. Is there any way to, I mean, maybe make the sides of that entrance in the new portion somewhat thicker? To match some of the um, the, the posts that, you know, support that presidium on the, on the Alexandria? You know, the, that frame the windows?
You mean the pilasters up, fl- flanking the entrance?
Yes, not, not, not the ones uh with the uh, the.
With the skinny, right, the central, the central entrance, is that what you mean?
No, I actually mean, I'm following the, 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 they look like posts, like decorative iron posts holding up.
Oh, I see, they are.
And, and it, you know, something like that, just to mimic the roundness, it might, it might pull it over, it's just a, just.
Yeah, I, I think we're, and I don't, Tom, Jazz, Pop, jump in. But as, as we get into the next level of detailing, we'll keep these comments in mind. We're, we're more than happy to share updates as we move through it. I think both Peter, Catherine and Chris, you've made, you know, great feedback on this entry. And we'll, we'll certainly run with that.
Thank you.
Okay.
Happy to.
So. Great, um, Peter, were you done with your comments?
Um. Yes, and, and thank you, but I, I would like a clarification on this lobby entry. Is there a vestibule, is there a double set of doors? Or can you just explain how that works, maybe it's obvious in the plan, but.
Yep, I'll switch back to plan, so what we're, um, these are set three feet in. So when the doors open, they fold within the inset of the arch. And then the, let me go back, um.
Probably zoom in there.
Yeah, I'm gonna go to the plan for a second, sorry, I have to close out of the second turn page. Um, so coming into that, we have a little cafe lobby. We, we haven't really programmed if we'll have a vestibule or not, we're, we're thinking not. Um, you may have an air curtain just for the different temperate seasons. But we'll look to have kind of our concierge entry cafe setup and then access to the elevator.
So in the ren- in the rendering, I see what appears to be a archway inside?
Uh, that is, uh, that, yes, that's, that's back further, like separating the stairs. Let me just go to the plan, that may be like back here at this opening up to the stairs.
Okay.
Yeah, so that's just playing off the motif, we haven't gotten to any of the interior design on that. But the idea that you would see kind of a layering through that space was the intent.
Okay, thank you, that's all, John.
Okay, and um, thank you, Peter, and fellow commissioners, I have a few comments that, can you go back to that rendering? That one, um, the, the previous one. Um, D'Artagnan, yes, that one, thank you. Um, uh, actually, I agree with Catherine that the entrance um, looks better in this rendering. Than in the one on the next page. Um, the one on the next page made me feel inclined to suggest that you eliminate the segmented arch over the entrance. Because I thought it, it was diluting the significance of the arches over the doors and windows in the Alexandra. To repeat it in the addition. But I feel less so about that when I see it from this view. I think part of what I like about this view that I didn't see in the next view is that the doors are set back. As you said, three feet, right, D'Artagnan?
Correct.
And it looks like the sidewalls, the return walls are beveled.
Correct.
They don't, they don't go back per- perpendicular, they, they, they bevel in toward the door. And I presume the archway over the top also bevels inward.
Correct.
And, and I wa- I think that's a handsome detail, and it makes the arch feel better integrated. Than I thought it was going to be, so this view, I think, sells that. I don't think the next view clearly depicts that. And um, and made me less excited about the way the entrance is detailed. Um, I, I also agree with. Now I can't remember who made the comment about making the door higher. Um, Peter, thank you, Peter, um, because I think that would work much better for this entrance way. And I would make sure that the window on the um, return wall, uh, that we can't see in this view. Um, also, you know, follows, follows suit. Um, and I, I, first of all, I love the fact that you have a window on that return wall. Because um, prior applications, um, prior versions of this had a, a blank wall there. Um, a solid wall, and I love the fact that you will be able to be in the lobby and look through that wall. To see the um, the plaza leading up to the Alexandra. Which, which may or may not have things happening in it, and I hope, I see tables and chairs in the renderings, and I hope that's what happens in real life. Um, the um, the other thing I want to mention while we're talking about walls. Uh, we've already talked about the mechanicals, and um, it sounds like you're being sensitive to um, sightlines. And as you know, we want to see as little of those mechanicals as possible, which is a challenge, given the long sightlines. That you have in all directions from this, for this, to this building, uh, down Mass Ave and Washington Street. So you've got your work cut out for you, but um, I trust that you will do everything possible to minimize their visibility. Um, and I'm sure.
Be, sorry, John, to add, they will.
Go ahead.
And then enclosed screening to have uniformity, so you're not seeing a whole bunch.
Right.
Yeah, that, that's important to us in the visual setup of the building.
Right, I think we'll want to see the design of the enclosed screening.
Yeah.
Um, and, and how much of that will be visible in um, sightlines? Um, because even that would want to be visible as minimally as possible. Um, and you know, if we're gonna see six or eight feet of it, which I hope we don't, but if we do. Um, you know, we certainly want to know what it looks like. Um, and then um, the other thing that I want to talk about is the party wall that faces Roxbury. Um, you, you haven't talked much about that and what that party wall will look like. But I would like to see some of the front facade above the building it's attached to turn. At least for some distance, before it begins with the material that you are presently showing for the party wall. Otherwise, the front facade skin is going to look like wallpaper.
Yeah, so it's not an applied, it's got a return.
Right.
Yeah.
And. So, you know, and.
We can look at this, I know we did this recently, someone else in our office on the, on the five seventy-nine or five eighty-seven Albany. Where we had an end, end party.
Right.
So we'll.
That's right.
Yeah.
I think it should go at least a bay, you know, not, I'm not talking about like twelve inches. You know, I mean, I think it needs to wrap at least, you know, you've got panels in the side. Uh, in the party wall, you're showing like a panelization.
Yeah, so we could take that, like a three foot panel or something.
Right, take it to the first panel. Um, so that it looks, it gives the front facade some depth, so it doesn't look like wallpaper. Um, you're doing such a nice job with the front facade, I don't want it to fall apart at that intersection of the two walls. Um, uh, and those were my comments, that was it. Um, so, um, yeah, um, I think this is great. Um, staff has actually given us, um, you know, a number of provisos to include in our motion. I hope you won't feel disconcerted with that, many of them are just repeats of the provisos of earlier. Um, earlier versions of this that still apply, um, and we just don't want them to be forgotten. And some of them are, two or three are, are new. So I think when we get a motion, you're gonna hear a whole bunch of provisos, don't be surprised by them. Um, and you, you'll have heard them before, and you knew what they were, and you were okay with them then. So, um, so I think, um, i- it, it won't be too shocking, but we have to say them for the record. Um, so, um, if uh, someone would like to make a motion, I think we're ready for one.
I'll make a motion, and let some Peter or Catherine who've been here through this want to do it?
It's all yours, John.
Okay, I'll make a motion to, well, what provisos from this discussion do you want to include in the motion?
Um. Well, from, from this discussion, um, only that, you know, we would see updates of the um, mechanicals. And I would like to see an update of um, how the front facade of the addition would. Um, return into the party wall. Um, and also an update of the front entrance to the addition. So those were three things that were discussed. Um, but there are a list of provisos in the staff recommendations, John?
Got them in front of me.
Okay, good, so those, those three items in addition to the ones in staff recommendations.
Okay, but so we'll just call those updates. So I'll make a motion to very happily uh, uh, approve this as submitted with some provisos. Uh, the first proviso is that we be updated on mechanical equipment and visibility of mechanical equipment. The second is that we be updated on any changes made to uh, in details in general. But in specifically the party wall return. And the third is changes in the entrances, uh, especially the height of the arch. Then to that, I want to add, being uh, familiar with the tax credit process, uh, that, that the commission. At least commission staff be included in any of the tax credit um, negotiations and changes. Because I know those can get very complicated. And uh, I know that uh, MHC is understaffed right now and having trouble assigning uh reviewers. But I think in that case, it may be true that the uh, staff, commission staff, South End Commission staff can be helpful to you. Um, so then, uh, the recommended uh, provisos by staff, which I agree with all of them. Um, and were made before, uh, do you want me to read them all into the record, Rachel? Or um, for the public, public in here, or do you, how do you want to handle that? I mean, I'm happy to do it.
Um.
Joe said yes.
I can read them if you would like, John.
No, I'm happy to read them, I just, Joe was nodding down there, he's at the bottom of my screen. All right, number one is drawings at seventy-five per, or documents, I will say, at seventy-five percent completion. Or somewhat higher in that range, that be remanded to staff for their review and approval. Um, all onsite material mockups uh, be remanded to staff. Also, and staff can, in either of these cases, draw, pull in commissioners, or have the right to pull in commissioners or question commissioners. If they see it as appropriate. And those um, mockups on site would include not just the materials, but any kind of mockup. Showing uh, how joinery works or proportions or, or connections, anything like that. Um, and that an updated conservation plan for the facade of the Hotel Alexandra be also remanded to staff for a review. I think that's in process, uh, if it isn't almost complete. The plan should include techniques, materials, measured drawings, indicating um, where conservation will take place. As well as photographs of the existing site. I also, I'll add to that, that I think a tour of some commission members or representative commission members is an appropriate thing to do. I think it's really important uh, going forward, just to make sure that we've all done our due diligence. Because we know that things change during construction, we know that there will be hidden, hidden conditions um, revealed. And that having commissions uh, members as well as staff, having seen the conditions starting before construction. Or as construction starts, uh, I think would be make, going forward with any of those changes, important. I, I mean, uh, easier to do. Then um, the provisos from the December. Sixth decision, um.
Twenty-two.
Twenty, from twenty-two, yeah, I'm just, does this include, does this delete the uh, the tower things? The tower exceptions?
Yeah, I deleted the stuff related to the tower.
So that the existing facades of the structure will be closely examined by the applicant and the commission to determine which architectural details are to be preserved in their current condition. and which details are to be restored or replaced to the original condition. The plans to accord these findings are to be submitted to staff for final approval. This was one of the things that came up in the preliminary hearing, and I think is something that MHC will also check in on and more, I'll I'll say that I was very pleased to learn last time that the bays weren't going to be rebuilt, but that they could be restored. So that, I think it's referring to that kind of thing. Two, the signage above the commercial storefront level will not be approved for the hotel or commercial tenants now or in future applications. The exterior facade lighting plan also needs to be submitted to staff and, you know, we'll want to see the the usual photometrics locations and so on. I, you, you had a nice rendering that shows you have a start on this. This approval is issued with the agreement that the photographic documentation is to be performed for the entire historic structure prior to and during construction based on the standards set forth by the U.S. Secretary of the Interior as well as all construction documents. I think the standard referred to the photography. Once completed, this documentation is to be submitted to staff for the record. Mockups for new materials, as we said previously, will include the SELDC staff. During the subcommittee meetings held on September tenth, two thousand nineteen, September twenty-sixth and October twenty-fourth, two thousand nineteen, the commission discussed the details listed above. We also discussed many of them in our preliminary hearing, advisory hearing for this application. And we determined that the restoration plans lighting a tower and scratch tower, the restoration plans, lighting and renderings completed by the architects and submitted to staff satisfy the provisals for the, well, I'm confused this. I think we still are asking for photographs and updates of everything, so let's not include that one. Is that all right, Rachel?
Yep.
But we do want the photographic documentation, as said previously, performed on the entire historic structure. And this is repeats that it should be meet the standards set by the Secretary of the Interior. Blah, blah, blah. I think that's everything.
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
Phew.
However, keep us, keep in touch.
Yeah.
John, John.
We're not going, we're not going anywhere.
John, you may have set a record for the longest motion in the history of the district.
I share that record with Rachel.
Okay, Rachel and John, congratulations. So I'm waiting for a second. Do I hear a second? Okay, Catherine. So we have a motion that's been seconded and we can go to a public comment now. And I already see some hands raised, so I know there'll be some. I'm going to read the script whenever. I think Rachel has to share now.
Sorry.
That's okay. We're ready. Members of the public will now have an opportunity to ask questions and provide public comment on the application and discussions. To do so, please raise your hand via the Zoom meeting platform. If you're calling in and cannot use the platform, you can press star nine to raise your hand, or you can send your questions to staff via email at southendldc@boston.gov. So we have some people raising their hands. Sarah, would you like to orchestrate?
Yes, so we did receive thirteen letters in support written, and then we have two hands raised, and I see Lloyd Philly on should be able to unmute.
Yes, Lloyd Philly and I live at Inchester Square, five sixty-three Mass Ave. I have questions about both party walls on either side of the infill building. The infill building is set back on on the, I'll say, the left side next to one seven 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 Washington Street by, I think, at least a foot. And on the right side, I'm not quite sure how much that setback is, but both setbacks expose brick, which would were were not originally exposed. And I'm wondering if there's a sense of wrapping the metal facade around to hide those brick so that you don't have the sandstone of the Alexandra, then this small portion of brick, and I'm talking about the upper floors, not the ground floor. And then you get the aluminum or whatever the metal is. Then you have another foot of that brick, which is actually some interior brick, which was the party wall, not exposed, not normally exposed to the weather. So that facade has two different bricks, which we'll be seeing. I'm wondering if it's makes sense to wrap the metal to to cover that.
Okay. I I I think we can take an answer from the applicant team if you wish to answer that. I thought there was a some kind of recess detail between the addition and the Alexandra. Is that right? Is there a thin recess?
Yeah, there's a thin recess and the plan there, John, was to do a kind of full repoint and and tooling of the masonry there to to keep that exposure because it's, you know, kind of historic in nature. But understanding, I think, Lloyd, to your comment, ensuring that it's stable and has the longevity of an exterior wall is something if we would take upon ourselves to make sure it was done with the proper repointing and masonry attention to that section.
It's not so much the stability that is the only issue. It's the aesthetics between adding that, I mean, originally, the Ivy Bean Hall being home was brick. So you didn't have all the variety of materials. And I'm I'm concerned about the visuals of, I mean, yes, the stability is a concern. But I'm concerned also about the visuals of having sandstone, brick, metal, and then brick again. Trying to make it a little bit more homogeneous. It's my
Lloyd, I think the commission will take your comments into effect and we will be mindful of that as we move forward and see how the details mature. So
And we're happy to look at it. As long as John with you. But no, Lloyd, good, good comment. I think we'll certainly take a look at it. Our understanding from prior approvals was having a bit of that existing corner. Hence, the setback was important, but we're more than happy to to vet these options as we go through the detailing.
Thank you.
Yep. I Sarah, I think we have at least one more hand raised.
Yeah, Jonathan Alves.
Thank you. I was trying to unmute my camera, but it doesn't look like I'm able to. So it's Jonathan Alves for the record. I am a ten-year resident of the South End. I am the Vice President of Blackstone Franklin Square Neighborhood Association, a board member of the South End Business Alliance, and a co-chair of the Soccer Unity Project in the South End. I'm speaking tonight as a resident and a representative of the Blackstone Franklin Square Neighborhood Association. I have been a part of this process as a resident and community member for the last five years. For the record, I'd like to state that the development team has done a tremendous job engaging the community, has done a tremendous job showing patience and diligence with the city of Boston, and has achieved two prior approvals. I recall the last time around, the big issue was the height. The height is now no longer a problem, given some funds that have been made available. I would like to state for the record that I one hundred percent support this project in its current form. I represent the Blackstone Franklin Square Neighborhood Association, which is adjacent, who support this project in its current form. I would encourage the city and anybody involved to move expeditiously for approval. This project represents a catalyst to a corner of the city that has been vacant and a troubled area for as long as I have been a resident and far, far, far beyond that. This project represents so much more to the South End, to Roxbury than it does on paper. I want to thank the development team again for their patience and for their commitment and for their effort to put forward a very important project. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Jonathan. For your comments. So we have a motion. It's been seconded. We've heard public comment. Have we heard all public comments, Sarah?
Yes, I think that's it.
Okay, great. Thank you. Having heard all public comment, we'll go to a vote. But before we do, I just want to say one last thing. As a former resident of Worcester Square in the nineties, having stood on the corner of Worcester Square and Mass Ave in the middle of the night, having been woken up by fire engines, seeing thirty-foot-high flames coming out of the top of the Alexandra, I could, can't tell you how happy it makes me to see the Alexandra come to the point that we're at now. So thank you very much to the entire development team and design team for getting us to this point. It's a, it's a, I think, a situation for celebration. So, thank you very much.
Could we engage in a little celebration right now?
Yeah. A little applause would be, I think, appropriate.
And you too. Thank you for hanging in all this time on this job.
Yeah. So, yeah, so I think we'll go to a vote.
Done.
Yeah.
Sorry, while I'm not voting, can I just ask a question for clarity on the motion to John Freeman? The items that were, that you, not added, but you stated upfront that were in addition to the the staff language, you you had said we be updated. Do you mean staff?
I think staff is, when we say that the commission be updated, it always goes through staff. And staff can make a decision whether something should include, always has the right to make a decision to decide whether it should include commissioners or whether it can be handled at a staff level.
I just wanted to be clear. Thanks. Appreciate it.
Sure. Thank you, Kevin.
No problem.
So we'll, we'll start with the voting then. Peter.
An enthusiastic eye.
Yeah, Catherine.
Aye, aye, aye. I love it.
John Freeman.
An enthusiastic eye as well.
Yep. Chris?
A resounding, can't wait to go on a tour pre-construction. Aye, aye, aye.
He can't wait for that, yeah.
And the chair says, hallelujah, aye, and I vote with the motion. So the motion carries. So thank you very much, team. We can't, I I I think we've expressed how excited we are and I don't even think we've gotten to the full extent of our excitement. So excellent, excellent.
Awesome.
Yeah, you definitely have our support.
Thank you so much, commissioners.
Yeah, thank you all.
That's great. So thank you, and we have some further items on the agenda. We're done with design review, but not with the meeting. We have administrative review and would somebody like to make a motion to approve administrative review?
I move to accept, approve rather, the administrative review.
I second it.
Okay, we have a motion that's been seconded, yes?
I need to recuse myself from one of the applications, so we could accept that one, or I could recuse myself from the entire vote, whichever is easiest.
Ladder.
Yeah, so, so then we'll, if if Peter recuses himself, does that allow Kevin to vote, Rachel?
It does.
Yes, okay. Then we'll go to a vote.
Kevin? The second of the motion.
Oh, we need a second, yes. We need a second.
Chris.
I seconded.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
Seconded. I'm sorry too, because I didn't hear that. Thank you, Chris. So we'll, we'll go to a vote then, and I'll ask Kevin, since he's voting.
Aye.
Okay. Catherine?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
And the chair votes with the motion, so the motion carries. Next item on the agenda. We have a presentation and discussion on EV chargers in the South End Landmark District.
Oh, boy.
How exciting.
Hey. So Joe and I went out a couple of weeks ago and we met up with some people from from planning, I think, Joe, and also with Michael, who's here tonight. We looked at a mockup for an EV charger and talked a little bit about the program that the city is really interested in supporting and bringing to the South End. So Michael is here, and then Joe and I are also here if you have additional questions.
And Rachel, I think I'll just add, you know, where this falls currently in our current standards and criteria would be under public areas utility items, and it currently states public utility furnishing, telephone panels and booths, poles, meters, street and traffic lights and boxes and the like must be placed to prevent visual or pedestrian obstruction, and they must be painted a dark color. So those are really the current guidelines that we have to guide us here, and we have you know, seen a few different versions and varieties of these here, so we're excited to get your input tonight. So, Michael, if you're here and ready to present, I'd be happy to hear from you.
I'm sorry, who is Michael?
Michael is from a company called It's Electric, who installs these charging stations.
Yes, hi. I'm there is. Michael Ray, R E is the last name.
Great, thank you.
No problem. All right, well, hello, everyone. Very nice to to speak to you tonight. Yeah, so I'm, like I said, Michael Ray with It's Electric. So we are, I'm with the, I'm the senior project manager for It's Electric in Boston. So I'm responsible for overseeing deployment of these EV charging stations throughout the city of Boston. So we have a little presentation to show you tonight. And then I'll take any questions. Really, this is about introducing our chargers to to you guys and to get the the ball, the ball rolling and to allow for the eventual deployment of these chargers. So Rachel, if you want to, I I think you're the one pulling them up, right? Yep, there it is. Okay, so like I said, I'm with this company, It's Electric. So we do curbside EV charging. Right now, we have an agreement with the city of Boston to install two hundred and twenty-five EV chargers throughout the city. Rachel, do you go to the next slide? So like I said, curbside EV charging is our focus, so we are aiming to bring accessibility to EV charging in urban areas, where people don't have garages, where they don't have driveways, where they can park their personal vehicles and charge from their own house. We aim to fulfill that need and fill in that gap that exists in EV charging infrastructure in the United States. Next slide, Rachel. Like I said, also, we have an agreement with the city of Boston to install two hundred and twenty-five of these chargers in the next five years. That's our ribbon-cutting ceremony at our very first charger here in Boston that's up in Roselandale. And we're looking, look, the city, the the mayor is aiming to have a charger ultimately within five minutes walking distance of every Bostonian, and we're helping fill that gap. Next slide. So we are a little different than most curbside EV charging companies. We power our chargers from buildings directly, so we don't pull power from the grid out in the street. We partner with buildings to tap off of their spare capacity and then run power back out to the sidewalk in order to power these chargers. It's faster, simpler, cheaper. It it's a more efficient way of of building out this infrastructure than having to connect to the main every single time you want to install a charger. Next slide, Rachel. So we, these are level-two chargers, so we're talking about eight-ish hours to fully charge a vehicle. These are not DC fast charging stations where you can pull up and charge your car in twenty minutes. That requires a lot more infrastructure. They're much more expensive to build. It's not feasible for the curb. So we're providing that intermediary charging. And like I said, we're pulling off of the existing capacity that that buildings already have. Next slide. We also do, do it a little differently than most charging companies. We cover the cost of installation entirely. We're the owner-operators of the chargers. And because we partner with properties, we share a little portion of the revenue that's generated by the charger back with the property owner. So it's based off of utilization, but we estimate that generally to be between seven hundred dollars and thirty-four hundred dollars per year, per charger, back to the property owner. And the installation is very straightforward. The general timeline that we've seen so far in Boston Um, and the installation is uh, very straightforward. The general timeline that we've seen so far in Boston is the design. Uh, once we have an agreement signed with the property, takes about four weeks, about a month, five weeks maybe. Um, permitting takes anywhere from two to five months and installation uh, can take place in just two days. Actually, we just finished the installation of a charging station in Dorchester that took about three days. Um, so less than a week is, is what we aim to always keep our chargers, the construction of our chargers within. Uh, and also what's different about uh, the It's Electric chargers that you'll be seeing pop up around Boston is that they are detachable cable chargers. So there's no cable hanging off of the side. Um, it's the component of public charging infrastructure that fails most frequently that gets vandalized, people steal the copper. Um, it's a potential trip hazard. Um, it's obtrusive uh, hanging off of the side of a charger. So uh, we get around that by not having one at all. Um, we provide cables for free to whoever requests them. Um, and so the cables exist in uh, car owners' vehicles, and when they're ready to charge, they pull up, they uh, plug their cable into the charger, plug it into their car, charge it, and then when they're done, they unplug on both ends, put it back in their car, and they're on their way. Uh, next, yep. So uh, we work with our partner cities, Boston, um, to manage parking. These spaces are supposed to be for EV charging exclusively. Um, you're not supposed to be using them as a regular parking space. Um, so right now in the city of Boston, um, we've been putting these two signs up to indicate uh, the, the charging space. Um, you're supposed to be plugged in and it's supposed to be for electric vehicles only. Now, we can't enforce that on the street ourselves. The city does that, but the city um, has been a great partner in, in keeping these, these chargers free. Now, yes, next slide. Um, and this is the, so we do time-based pricing as well. Uh, so a lot of chargers will char- uh, charging companies charge by the kilowatt hour. Um, we do it by the hour. This is to incentivize people to charge their vehicles and move along. Uh, because if you charge by the kilowatt hour, if you're plugged in, but your battery is full, um, you're not, you're effectively getting a free parking space. So if you're plugged in, you're being charged. These are the rates for the city right now. Uh, we're doing a day rate of three dollars an hour and a night rate of a dollar fifty. The night rate is a little bit lower so that people don't feel compelled to run out at, in the middle of the night to unplug their cars. Um, and it's, it's always cheaper than a regular gas of, uh, tank of gas. So these are the, the charger details. Um, the charging post itself is forty-three point five inches high. It's a seven by seven inch square. Um, they're designed to be uh, unobtrusive, low-profile, fit in with any street pro- uh, street uh, profile, any street corner. Um, and then that unit on the bottom there, we call that the home unit. Um, so that's really the controller communications box. Um, that's not mounted out on the street. That gets mounted on the property or within the property. So the only thing uh, that actually gets, is visible out on the street is the charger itself, which you can see is uh, the top detail. Um, and this also is the re- the, the rest of the, the technical specifications. Uh, if you're so motivated to look through, right, yeah, uh, we can go to the next one. So um, our standard charger uh, is a stainless steel model that you can see on the left um, that we are installing in most places. Uh, all the chargers that we've installed so far in the city are this stainless steel model. But specifically for historic districts, um, like the South End, uh, we have created a matte black charger. Um, so it's powder coated, uh, it's still stainless steel, so it's still uh, street-worthy, um, but it's black to fit in with the uh, the nature of the environment. Um, if you can go to the next one. Uh, well, I'll, I'll, you'll, there's some pictures, you'll see.
Michael, 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 before we move forward, if we could just go back, I just want to point out that that base that you're seeing is not part of the actual installation, that that
Correct.
Really for your mock-up purposes.
Yeah, that's just the model. Um, the actual charger, the, which I think there's an image later on, is embedded directly into the concrete. So there's no, there's no base that's visible. Uh, yeah, if we go to the next one, Rachel. So this is a standard installation plan. Um, this one, I believe, is for a site in South Boston. Um, but it's pretty basic. Uh, I, I use this one as an example because it's a townhouse where all of the equipment is mounted on the interior of the structure. Um, so the only thing visible from the street is the charger itself, the charging post. Um, it's a, it's a pretty, like I said, pretty simple installation process. We keep it within five days. We aim for two to three. Um, and uh, yeah, the only thing, the conduit is buried in the concrete. Um, the home unit, the communications box that I mentioned is inside the house. The meter is also inside the house. Um, or wherever the meter currently exists. We try to mount, maintain, mount all of our, of, all of that equipment, the meter and the uh, home unit next to the existing meters in that building. And this is uh, the black charger um, out in the field in the South End. This was at ninety East Brookline Street. Uh, it was a, a property that was potentially interested in hosting the charger. Um, and uh, that's sort of it in, in the environment. Uh, you can see it's pretty low-profile, uh, very easy to miss if you're just walking along.
But not with the, not with that base.
Not with that gray base, right. The actual charger is just embedded straight into the concrete. I can, I believe the next slide, Rachel, if you want to go to that, uh, go one more down, the next one. Yeah, you can see, so that's a, that's our very first charger in Roselandale. That's twelve Colgate Road. Um, and you can see how it's just embedded directly into the concrete. So that's the, that's the gist of it. Um, you know, where there's uh, interest in the South End from uh, residents who would like to host these chargers. Um, I know electric vehicles are be uh, popular in the South End amongst many residents. Um, and they're continuing to grow in uh, usage. So um, there's uh, definitely interest. So uh, that's, if there's any questions, I'd love to be able to answer them.
Yes.
Yeah, I have a few questions, but I'll go to fellow commissioners. Catherine?
Yeah. So this image shows a concrete sidewalk. That, that's, it's not a concrete sidewalk there, is it? It's a brick sidewalk.
That's a concrete.
No, it's concrete. Uh, yeah, in front of.
I have a million questions, I'm sorry. What hap- when it's brick?
Uh, well, so we would, we always restore to the existing um, condition. In general, I think we're looking to avoid uh, brick sidewalks because of the increased cost associated with that.
Good luck in the South End, they're all brick. Well, except for this, except for that one.
Yeah, exactly.
Well, that's why I'm so surprised that that's concrete. Jeez, I walked down there, I didn't notice it. But here's my question. How is this supposed to work in the South End? Uh, maybe I don't understand the whole deal. Uh, a building owner buys this thing and has access to it. But how do you control the parking? I mean, South End parking, it's residents and they pull up, there's not spots, you just pull up along the street. How do you keep somebody away from your charger?
So it's not a personal charger. These are public chargers. So the, the property owner isn't buying anything. Um, they're just.
Good what you were saying.
Yeah, um, so we're, allow me to rephrase it. Um, we are partnering with property owners to tap off of their existing electrical supply, um, and then running conduit back out to the sidewalk. So this is for public usage. No one owns it. I mean, we, It's Electric is, owns the charger itself. Um, and we have an agreement with the city to put it in the public right-of-way. But uh, this is not for the personal usage of the property owner. This is for everyone to use.
So we're, I'm sorry, Michael. You're paying a property owner for use of his electricity?
Essentially, uh, yeah, and but we're not paying them a fixed fee. They get a little share of the revenue that's generated by the charger itself. So um, someone has an electric vehicle, they live in the area, uh, and they'd like to be able to charge their car um, in a convenient spot. One of our chargers is out on the sidewalk, they pull up, they plug in, they pay a fee, that three dollars an hour fee or a dollar fifty an hour at night fee. Um, and then of that revenue that's generated, we share a portion of that back to the property owner um, just to incentivize them to uh, allow us to tap off of the existing electrical capacity.
I see. So the property owner doesn't even have to have an electric vehicle. They're, they're, I see, okay.
As a matter of fact, our very first property uh, that we, our first charger we installed in Boston at Ros- in Roselandale, the property owner did not own an electric vehicle, but as soon as we finished installing it, he went out and bought himself one because now he had a place to charge. So that's, the, the idea is to ins- it's to further allow people to, to own electric vehicles. Uh, because it's a, charging anxiety is a real concern, um, where people don't have a reliable place to, to charge their, their vehicles. Um, and if you go to a city like London, as a matter of fact, you'll see these sort of uh, electric vehicle charging ports all over the city. Um, we're actually the first, we're just the first ones in the United States to be doing this detachable cable system um, in urban areas. But this has been a tried and true uh, system in, in Europe for many years now.
Well, thanks for explaining that because I just, I just didn't get it. Okay.
Yeah, it's confusing. Uh, it's, it's a little weird because they don't own it, but they allow us uh, to, to use their power.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, um, uh, Peter, any questions?
Uh, yeah, I have a few. Um, are any of these posts like duplexes or is each one for a single charge?
Uh, I'm not sure. Uh, you mean, more than one charger in at once?
Yeah.
Yeah, uh, it, we can. Um, it depends obviously on the property. Uh, so we have to try to keep the hardware itself, the charger itself within the frontage of the partner property, the person we've signed an agreement with. Um, so if a building is large enough to accommodate two chargers, we actually prefer to do two. Um, but in this instance, for example, it was not large enough, so we would have only put in one. Um, we'll be putting in two. You'll see, as, as uh, we roll these out more throughout the city, um, you'll be seeing more two charging installs um, roll out, uh, because we like to have some um, we, we, it's better in, if a charger goes down, um, some redundancy um, to have two i- in any given spot. Obviously, and it's also more cost-effective because there's a certain fixed cost associated with running conduit out to the sidewalk to a point, and then adding another charger doesn't drive up that, the cost that much more, but potentially doubles the amount of revenue that's generated.
Okay, I have a couple more questions. Um, do you have a goal for the South End?
Of, of uh, chargers we'd like to install?
Yeah.
Uh, we don't have a specific goal. Um, now, in general, we're, we have submitted a memo to the city that sort of that uh, descri- details exactly how many, the sort of coverage that we're looking for throughout the city. Um, we don't want to oversaturate an area with chargers. Um, we don't want to install more than two on any given block. Actually, I believe we, the, the memo itself states that we don't want to install more than two chargers within an eighth of a mile radius. Um, but we don't have a specific number um, allocated for the uh, South End yet.
Mm-hmm, okay.
And it will, it would be backed off of uh, property interest as well. Uh, I, you know, if we don't have people who are looking at, to host chargers, then we can't put them in.
So in, like on Tremont Street, where they've just done some modifications to Tremont Street, where there are bike lanes immediately adjacent to curb and then the uh, the parking is out into the street more. Um, how would you install there?
Well, we wouldn't. I, I, as a matter of fact, we've looked at properties that were interested in hosting on Tremont Street um, and had to turn them down because of those, those bike lanes. Um, it's just not feasible to run conduit from those buildings across the bike lane to the sidewalk, uh, to the, to the place where the, the cars are parked. Um, so our general design process um, can be broken down into what we call a desktop evaluation stage. So um, a property owner is interested in hosting these chargers, they sign up on what we call our waitlist, um, which is a list of, a, a signup list for people who are interested. We'll do a desktop evaluation where we'll take a look on Google Maps essentially, at a high level, is this a feasible site? Is there a bike lane out in front? Is there street parking in front of a property at all? Um, those sort of, is there a hydrant? You know, we, we can't move a hydrant, we're not going to cut down a tree. That, those sort of questions. Um, and if it's still feasible, we'll go out and we'll take a look. Um, I'll, specifically, I'll go out and take a look, um, to make sure that it's technically feasible. Do they have the electrical capacity that we need? Uh, where is the meter located? Where the panel is located? Um, did I miss anything in the, in the desktop evaluation? Sometimes Google Maps is outdated and they've installed a bike lane and it's not in bike, in, in Google Maps yet, so I, I show up and there's a bike lane and, and it doesn't work. Um, so we vet uh, the, the sites along the way, um, because we don't want to commit uh, to time and uh, money spent on a design that's just not feasible.
Hey, my last question, if I could, John. Um, if you could talk about your maintenance program? I mean, obviously our guidelines talk about dark painted fixtures. Um, but I'm also concerned about those being um, inviting for graffiti.
Right, oh, certainly. Um, so these are uh, designed to be a, as street furniture. Um, they're, they're actually designed, I forget the name of the company now, that does street furniture in New York City. Um, so they're, they're meant to take abuse. Um, our gen- and they're modular and they're designed, so um, the charger can be placed, so there's a bracket um, that gets installed, embedded in the concrete during the installation process. Um, so if a charger gets damaged, broken, vandalized, uh, you can take the whole unit off and put a brand-new unit in on, on that base unit that's embedded in the concrete and have it operational um, in a matter of hours. So um, if a car were to hit the charger, right, and knock it over and get it all bent, um, it's very easy to fix it. Um, it's very easy to maintain these because you can just take off a unit and put in a new one. Um, and you don't need to tear up any concrete or anything like that. General maintenance, um, we have a, we're looking at some maintenance vendors who are actually right now, um, who will go along and clean uh, the snow off around the charger and in the space that there is allocated for the, the vehicle to park in. Um, generally maintains chargers and keeps them clean, that sort of uh, service that they'll, they'll be providing.
Thank you.
Okay, um, uh, Kevin, do you have any questions?
Um, no, I mean, you're not going to sell ads for these, right? Like, they're not going to be covered in advertising.
No, no.
Yeah, I don't know. Yeah, all that gets placed on the charger itself, um, which is not in this image because this is just a, a model charger, um, is just some decals that display how to use the charger and a QR code. Um, so that you can scan it with our app and just start the charging.
Great. Thanks, John.
Yep, okay. Um, uh, John?
Yeah, actually, that was a very good question about advertising because those of us, some of us remember bus shelters that were built and a representative who said to this commission, no, we won't have advertising on them. And they do. Um, my question is about signage. I think you've covered other things pretty well. Um, you mentioned that each charger will have a sign that says, yeah, you can only be parked here if you're plugged in and another sign that says electrical ve- electric vehicles only. Um, who puts those in? Where do they go? How many of them are they?
Yep.
Are there? Uh, and are you, do you paint the space or do you otherwise designate how long the space is? What, what else goes besides the charger?
Sure. So we put, so far, our installations in Boston have been uh, demarcated with two signposts, standard street signposts on either end of the space. Uh, a single space is twenty feet long. Um, if there's two chargers in a row, each one, each space is eighteen feet long. Um, and the uh, signage, we, we, as part of the installation process, we install the signposts, we put the signage up. Um, now, I know it was a question uh, when we went out uh, and took these photos and we're, and we're discussing there um, about the feasibility of installing signposts in uh, in the South End. Um, because I know generally signs are placed on existing light posts. Um, so that is an open question, um, really for you guys, uh, on how we would like to proceed with that. Um, we haven't painted any parking spaces. I know that was actually something we discussed when we went out that day. Um, that's not a standard for the city, I believe. Uh, parking, uh, painting the, the actual space itself to, to park it as a uh, uh, anything. I don't think the city has a standard for, uh, for painting spaces. Um, but we are certainly open to um, suggestions on, on how you guys think is the most feasible way, most um, unobtrusive way of uh, signing, signing the uh, charging spaces.
Do you have standards for how close you can put this to, for example, a tree pit or uh, a handicap ramp or other, you know, a, a, a drain?
So from the curb, this, the, the distance from the edge of the curb to the center of the charger is eighteen inches. Um, and otherwise, uh, we don't have standards, um, exactly. Obviously, we don't want to damage any trees, anything like that, so we maintain a distance. Um, but is, you know, if it's outside of the uh, the uh, the area where the tree is, then it's, it's safe. Um, this, it go- so the general permitting process with the city, um, just to give you uh, some context, because we're not the only ones looking at this. It, uh, we have to get agency approval, so that's Boston Water and Sewer, street lighting, disability. It uh, we have to get agency approval, so that's Boston Water and Sewer, Street Lighting Disability. Um, I may be forgetting a couple other agencies, and then we have to go through the PIC process, so uh, all of those different uh, stakeholders have to to sign off, um, and they get the detailed plans. Um, that was just a snippet of one of them that I showed you on the slide of of this one, I believe.
Do you have to cut the sidewalk?
We do, so uh, we have to trench, uh, yeah, and we have to, any square of sidewalk that we have to open up, we have to replace in its entirety. That's a, that's a Boston city standard.
And you said you're not going to do brick sidewalks?
Well, I I'm I never say never. Um, I know we're trying to avoid it where possible. Um, as an example, I went out to look at a a property um, in the North End, uh, that was surrounded by large granite slabs, and we're like, this is, this is too much. This is a lot of, it'd be very expensive and a very caught, uh, just not worth it for us to to have to tear up an entire granite slab and put a charger in and then replace it. Uh, bricks, we're open to. Um, you know, there are some properties that we've looked at that I think were it that are, we're interested in moving forward with and they're interested in moving forward that do have brick. Ideally, we know we're talking about concrete, but um, it'll it'll really depend. So uh, to answer your question uh, succinctly, no, we're not saying no to brick. Uh, it's just not ideal.
Because we'll want to know how you approach putting the brick back. And I guess my last question too is how are you going to choose these locations? Are they all going to be residential streets? Are you going to put them in commercial locations? Um, within eight hour charging time, I imagine they're going to conflict with some of the Boston parking rules.
Yeah, uh, so no, we we are firstly open to all forms of properties, commercials, re- commercial, residential, you name it. And some of the the property owners that we are speaking to are commercial property owners. Um, so major avenues, major streets, residential side streets, uh, they're all fair game because we we want to provide uh, convenient, accessible charging to everyone in the city of Boston. And uh, I'm sorry, what's what was your, the second part of that question?
Well, I think you're answering it was, you know, just trying to imagine, I said with an eight hour charging time, i- it could easily conflict with a lot of the parking restrictions on commercial streets and commercial districts.
Right, and and we are, uh, all existing parking regulations stay in effect. Um, so if you have to move for street cleaning, uh, you'll have to unplug for street cleaning.
Oh, so, so, and this is out of our purview, but so residential uh, only parking, which a lot of the South End is, uh, that would still be in effect, so this would essentially be only for right, South End resident parking.
Correct, yep, and if it's on a a major street that has two hour uh, metered parking, um, or commercial parking, then that would be the uh, limit as well for people parking in those spaces.
Okay.
The 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 idea with a level two charger in an urban environment like this is not to attract um, people just passing by, you know, like you would with a DC fast charger where you can charge your vehicle in twenty to thirty minutes. It's really meant for residents, for people who live nearby um, and want to have a reliable, accessible source of charging.
Okay, done, John?
I'm done.
Okay, great, Chris?
Uh, it it seems to me like the the space is almost like a handicap space, you know, if you're you know, that would be kind of the rules, the two signs, you stay there if you're handicapped, but you have to leave after the eight hours, seems like the other restriction and all the other parking things apply to it. But anyway, that that was just for clarification. Um, how big is the channel that you cut in in the sidewalk? Is it a false square of cement back to the seams or is it a smaller? I think that was answered also.
Yeah.
It was an answer.
It's only a two fo- two foot trench that we actually have to dig. And I, I mean, hey, I'd love if we only had to dig two feet across, uh, but the city does require us to to repair the entire slab of concrete, pour a whole new slab wherever we damage.
Okay.
So even when we're out in the sidewalk, we only need to dig two feet across. Um, we don't, we we have to repair the entire slab. It, this is not so going to be as much of an issue in the South End. Um, but further out in Boston, uh, like in Roselandale, there was some trenching through uh, a front yard, um, and that, the trench was two feet wide, um, and then.
And then I I've been uh, concerned about what is underneath the cement and how far this goes because I can see a a cart, you know, like a fire hydrant almost, you hit this, it knocks it over, how does it get repaired? Because it, you have maybe pull up the cement, I'm just curious about what's underneath that holds it steady like that.
Sure, there's a a stainless steel bracket, um, and threaded rod that holds the charger down to the bracket itself. Um, so it's embedded in the concrete, uh, so as long as the entire concrete slab isn't torn up, um, even if the charging post itself is damaged, uh, you can just place a new one on that embedded stainless steel bracket.
Is is, I mean, it look, uh, the plate makes sense to me, but the plate underneath the cement with a rod coming up, seems like that would.
The plate is not part of the.
I I know it's not, John. I said it wasn't, I just said it, to me, it looks stronger that way, and I wonder if that was undergr- under the cement to keep it steady. Um, I'm sure that it's been tried and true somewhere else, but that that was one of my questions. Um, it, can one of those towers have, if 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 it is in a double spot, can it have two plugs in it, or do you have to have two separate towers?
Uh, two separate, yeah, they're single port towers. Um, so one port per, or one, one tower per port.
Okay, and then what, what I'm, you know, with all the different types of houses and fronts and and brick and granite and and uh, brownstone and everything that comes out and then getting it on the sidewalk, do you have any specifications for how you're going to bring the con- conduit out? Because people's electrical boxes are in a lot of different places. They might be in the back of the building, the front of the building, side of the building, under the stairs. Just curious about if you've looked at all those, there's a lot of possibilities.
Yeah, and and every, every building is a little bit different, um, so you have to approach it in a, uh, with an imaginative, imaginative, imaginative mind. So uh, as part of the design process, uh, we map that out. Actually, Rachel, if you go back up a couple slides, I'd like to show that uh, design slide one more time, um.
I mean, I think we're very, we're very, uh, it's it's important to all of us, we don't want to see a conduit coming to the side wall of the stairs.
Uh, next one. Yes, that one. Um, yeah, so this uh, is a townhouse in the uh, in South Boston, like I said. So the meter here is placed in the basement, um, and then we detail the conduit run from the meter to uh, that communications box out underneath the steps of the uh, the building and then from the steps underneath it, out underneath the sidewalk. Um, so that's part of the the detailed design that we do, that uh, traces out the the conduit run that we're planning, that we're proposing on.
Okay, um, is this a wooden townhouse?
I believe it's a wooden townhouse. Yes, I believe so. Um, no, this is actually all running in the stone foundation. Um, so we're not actually going through any wood.
I I'd be curious more about how that would be done when you're going through, you know, solid uh, granite foundations.
Yeah, um, but this one, I believe, the address, if you want to look it up, is I think it's fourteen Linden Street in South Boston.
Yeah. Okay, because because you got a lot of thick stone and then and and you know, granite that you're getting to the sidewalk, and that would be my big concern, but that that's my question, how you do it. Right, good, thank you.
Of course.
Okay, so um, I've got a few questions. Um, I thought all of my questions would be answered by now, but they're, they're not, so I've, I've got a few. Um, is there a lighting component to this? A charging station?
Uh, is there like a a streetlight that illuminates the the?
No, within the, within the component itself, does anything light up?
There is a small ring, um, that uh, il- illuminates, um, that indicates the charging status. Um, so it's green when it's not being used, it's purple when it's uh, in the preparation stage, um, so like when.
And you, can you show us an image that?
Yes. Rachel, if you could go up, uh, a few slides, I believe you can see the ring a little bit more, next one. Uh, that you can see the illuminated blue ring there, so that's when it's successfully charging. That's the only light on the uh, on the.
Okay. Great, uh, the, um, you're not going to just put these on main streets, they might go on side streets too, is that right?
Yes, um, it'll be where uh, residents are interested in in hosting. That could be side streets, main streets. Um, like I said, it's, it's about making charging accessible.
Okay.
Uh, where people live and people work and operate.
So I can think of only two, maybe three streets in the South End that have concrete sidewalks. The rest of them are brick.
Right.
So you have your work cut out for you, um, if if brick is a challenge for you.
Right.
Uh, because most of the South End is brick sidewalks, even the main streets that have concrete sidewalks have brick uh, furnishing zones, which is the zones in which you would place this.
Right.
You know, where the trees occur and the fire hydrants and the light poles all sit. That first three to four feet or maybe five feet in some instances is brick. So sometimes the brick is set on sand and sometimes it's set on a concrete base. So you're going to discover a variety of conditions, um, when you're encountering um, brick. So, um, let's see, uh, you said that you want to do this as a two day turnaround, maybe three day turnaround install. Um, does that include the pavement repair too?
Yes, that does include the pavement repair, the the sidewalk repair.
Um, this, right.
The uh,
Do you intend to tear up, um, you know, people's gardens in order to access their building to put in the meter and the, and even the conduit for the electricity?
It it depends on the property. If there's really no better way than cutting through a garden, um, we obviously consult with the property owner to make sure that they're okay with it, um, and restore it as best we can to the previous condition.
Right.
It just depends. Uh, so if if we have to tear up a bush, um, then we'll go back and and tear it up and and kill it to do that. Then we'll go back and and plant the same bush.
I think any disturbance to the property might have to come back to the commission.
Sure.
As well, I'm just, I'm speculating, but anyway, we'll get to comments. We haven't gotten to comments yet. So, uh, that's the end of my questions. Um, Rachel, do you want us to be commenting here? Is this, you you said this was a discussion, right?
Yeah, I mean, this is just a discussion. Um, it's sort of a insight for Michael to see what kind of things he's going to need to take into consideration uh, with moving forward, any projects in the South End. Um, and again, we would be reviewing um, this under public areas, utility items, and then of course, any alteration to the sidewalk um, would also be under our purview.
And what about the private properties adjacent to the sidewalk? If there's disturbance there, wouldn't we need to review that?
Yep, yeah, it sounds like though all, any like equipment, all of that kind of stuff can be concealed inside, but if there's anything that would happen on the exterior of the building, of course, we would review that per usual standards and criteria.
Okay, thank you, Rachel. So that answers that. Um, but I think there, you know, we may want to comment, you know, just to give some advice to um, Michael, so I'll ask commissioners if they have any. Uh, Peter, do you have any um, comments or insights you'd like to share with Michael?
This is triggered another question. This has triggered another question. Do you have any South End applications waiting in the wings?
We do have some South End properties that are interested. Um, I I pull up the list here, actually, just out of uh, curiosity here. Um, ninety East Brookline was interested. Um, I know the the primary contact we've had there um, has received a little bit of pushback from the condo association, so I'm not sure if we'll be proceeding with that one. Uh, the Boston Housing Authority is looking at partnering with us and their property, uh, seven fifty-five Tremont Street is interested in hosting some chargers um, in the South End. Let me see, where else do I have?
Comments.
Accessible with me. I, I think that's all I can see right now on my list, but I know we've spoken to a couple of others as well. Uh, oh, um, actually, there is a um, a set of properties that are in the South End, but I believe the streets we're planning on putting them are just outside of the commission's purview. Um, those would be six oh seven Columbus Avenue and six twenty-seven Columbus Avenue. We're actually looking at putting them on, those are corner properties, and we're looking at putting them on side streets, um, which I believe are just outside of the district.
Okay. Peter, do you have comments?
I do not have a comment, thank you.
Okay, great. Um, uh, Kevin, do you have any comments?
Uh, no, I don't have any comments.
Okay, Catherine?
Well, maybe a little insight based on, you know, John Freeman mentioned something I had been thinking about. And that was commercial uh, properties or developments, you know, within the South End, there are some large buildings, uh, or, you know, well, actually, I live in, you know, the Ink Block, would something, maybe things like that, Michael, places like that are uh, candidates, you know, where they're not on the street, they have property that's off the street, but, uh, you know, a lot of interest in electric vehicles
Right.
uh, on the parts of the residents who live in these huge buildings.
Yeah, um, so we have definitely been in discussion with large apartment buildings, um, to potentially install some, some chargers. Um, it gets a little tricky in tha- that it changes the the pricing model essentially. Um, if it's going to be exclusively for resident, usage for by residence of a particular building. Um, I, we, it's, it's a large cost for us to incur, um, for what's rather limited uh, number of potential chargers, uh, chargers is a potential driver for charging. Um, so we 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 partner with them in a different way, we we change exactly like how the installation costs are covered. Uh, but that's definitely something we we've discussed before.
I see, because it just seems to me off, you know, that the South End is is, it would just be a nightmare to do this here. I don't know, you think about people parking their cars and not having places to park and sitting on the street for a week at a time because they don't want to move their car except that they have to for street cleaning and I, it just seems uh, very, very challenging, let's, let's say that.
Yeah, I totally understand that. It's, it's, it's a tricky, finding parking in a very dense areas is never easy. Um, but uh, we're aiming to bring the possibility of owning an electric vehicle to um, to people who otherwise feel like they don't have that uh, option because of where they live. Um, and in the dense urban area that they exist. But yes, I I I I understand your, where you're coming from with that. It's definitely, uh, I mean, w- one of the big incentives, the reason why we ha- we try to partner with cities, uh, with these parking regulations and we price our uh, chargers the way that we do is to encourage people to move on from those spaces so that they're not being used as a, an active parking space. Um, they're used as the utility that they are.
Okay, well, thank you.
Yeah. John, any comments?
Sure. You probably think we're giving you a really hard time.
No, not at all, this is great.
I think part of it is that we've seen a lot of kinds of street furniture come through and fail and the installation because they didn't think of a lot of these things ahead of time. So I hope that maybe uh, this is going to, you'll take these comments back and and questions back and you know, really make this successful, because I would love to see this successful. I don't live in the South End. I've spent many years there, uh, but I, it would be fantastic to see this work in the South End and every other neighborhood. So you have my great support.
Thanks.
I think that there are especially some things, particularly the signage, which I will be, will require a lot more careful thought when you come to real locations. The materials, I'm too worried about, uh, you know, trenching, bricks is probably easier to put in than a concrete sidewalk. Uh, because you can uh, remove only the bricks that you need to remove.
Right.
Uh, but but the signage, you know, that South End is so full of signage and so full of other stuff, other street furniture, everything from rep bicycles to bicycle rental to um, uh, benches and bus stops. Like getting the signage to work, I think is going to be something that'd be difficult and will require some additional thought in how to really make it work.
Certainly, yeah, and I appreciate that. Um, that's uh, definitely uh, coming into this discussion, that was the, I think in my mind, the the biggest outstanding question, um, is how how to handle signage. Because where we've been installing elsewhere in the city, uh, it's, it hasn't been a problem to install two regular signposts like a, like you would with a um, a a handicap spot. I actually, i- in in the, in the South End, um, how are handicap parking spaces uh, marked? Is it with a?
Two signs, just two signs on poles, it's like a sign. South inside, right, fine.
Okay, John, uh, did I answer your questions?
Yep.
Or are you done with your comments?
My comment.
Yeah, yeah, that's great. Um, Chris?
Okay.
Did I already? Did I already ask you? No, I did.
Oh, you certainly have it. Uh, leave the best for the last. First of all, I, uh,
I'm last.
I, you're, you're last.
That's what he was referring to, John.
That's, that's right.
Uh, I, I want to echo what John said. We are not trying to be negative toward this. I think it's a great thing. I'd like to see it. Something like this happen right now before we regress to coal oil fueled car. Get rid of all of this.
Go back to old steamers.
Yeah, we're, we're, we're headed that way, unfortunately, it seems. So, uh, that's, you know, I, I'm all for this and I think we want to help you make it successful, just like John said. There are a lot of signs, handicap signs, uh, south end parking signs, there's, uh, tree grills, there's the bikes around. There's the tree roots that are also a part of our, of our sidewalk scape. Um, you are, in order to be successful at this, you're gonna have to figure out how to install in brick, because brick is everywhere. And you might have brick and cement, just like, uh, John said as well. And I think you're gonna also have to really think about how you're gonna exit these curved buildings with the stairs. Um, and the, or the, uh, flat fronts as well. Uh, I think those are a lot of your issues. But the brick is a, a big thing and some of these sidewalks are so narrow between a, a tree grill and a fence, you have two and a half feet.
Right, and then on a street like that, we wouldn't install a charger.
Well, I, I don't think there's anything wrong with installing. I'm just saying, these are things that you have to, if the street, if the tree grill is three feet wide, this eighteen inches for the chargers. Not going to be as intrusive as the, the grill. You know, you can't push, push a, you know, stroller down them. Uh, I, I think you could find ways to have them there and i- if they operate similar to how a handicap spot is. Minus, you know, having those stickers, you could stay there for a long time, but, you know, people are, people are gonna adjust. I drive a twenty-seven year old gas car. I wouldn't mind an electrical car. I can see this would be very wonderful. But, um, you know, so let's move forward with something, because it, I think we need to move in this direction and be uh, very cognizant of the importance that this is to our, not only the south end, but to, to our health.
Yep. So, um, that's great. Any other comments, Chris?
I think that's it, John.
Okay, great. All, all good comments so far. Um, um, my comment is, um, I, I have a few. Um, you know, the sidewalk repair is concerning to me. I, I want to make sure that the sidewalk repair makes the sidewalk look like it did before you did the work. Um, so, um, that's one thing. Um, I'm glad the lighting is as minimal as it is. Um, we typically don't like to see internally illuminated elements in the south end. Um, this element is so minimal, it's just a ring. Um, normally, I think we would take issue with internally illuminated lighting. But I think this is so minimal and I think given the significance of what it's doing, uh, and how positive the impact is of having these, um, would be, would outweigh my concern about the, the minimal lighting that is there. Um, the, um, the other comment I want to make is to make sure that wherever these go, that you're still allowing for universal access. And be mindful of the fact that some buildings you may place this in front of have seasonal outdoor seating. That may not be there when you are investigating the installation. But that when the outdoor seating goes in, this might pose an obstruction to universal access around the outdoor seating. So just be mindful of that, um, when you're, um, in, you know, checking these out, when you're doing your reconnaissance, you know, ask if there's a ground floor retail establishment that is, has any outdoor elements that aren't there at the moment. So, because outdoor seating, when it goes in, sometimes only leaves four feet between the outdoor seating and the curb. And that's what you need for universal access. And if you install this, this would be an obstruction. So, um, so just be mindful of that, um, when you're checking into it.
Yes, that, thank you. That's a great comment.
Yeah, um, so, um, and I think that's, that's it. I, like Chris said, I think we all support the installation of these. I think it's better for the environment, better for our health. Um, and, you know, some people will, um, be rankled that there are fewer parking spaces in the south end. If you install thirty of these in the south end or fifty of them in the south end, that's thirty or fifty fewer parking spaces in a dense area that doesn't have enough parking as it is. Um, so, um, you know, y- you may get some community pushback. I hope you don't get enough pushback that would stop the program. Um, and, and I think there's a lot of support from the city agencies themselves who would help you with any community pushback, but, um, we may hear it when you come to us for, um, you'll have to come to us for approvals for the installation of each of these. And as, as a public hearing, you will face, um, community comment.
Yeah, yeah. We've, we've done some, um, and, you know, positive and negative from residents in areas where we've, we've installed, so we're, we're on the ball with that.
Good, good.
And just the, the last comment, you were talking about less, you know, fewer parking spaces. If, if I had one of these cars and wanted to park there for twenty-four hours, you'd plug in. So I'd pay three dollars an hour for the night thing, a dollar fifty during the day. What does that come out to? Uh, you know, forty dollars if I had to have a parking spot, I'm happy to pay it. I'll drive off the next day and charge again in two months when I need a charge. But, um, so that's a, that's a positive comment.
Right.
Thank you.
Yeah, more revenue for, um,
Yeah. Making the monies.
That's, that's right.
Thank you.
Um, yeah, so, um, is there anything else, uh, Rachel, that we need to do for Michael? As part of this discussion, or have we covered it?
No, I think this is pretty comprehensive. Um, Michael, do you have any questions for us?
Um, I don't think so. You guys, you covered it pretty well. Um, I think the biggest open ended question, uh, is, uh, how we handle signage. Um, but, uh, Rachel, you and I can discuss that, um, come up with some, some solutions. I don't know if we'll want to present a general plan for signage before we present any individual charging site. Um, but we can, we can discuss that.
Sounds good. Feel free to reach out to me and we can work on, work on the project.
Right.
Well, thank you, everyone. I really.
Uh, where are they installed if we want to take them?
Yeah, uh, the two operational ones right now are twelve Colgate Road in Roselandale and eight Gayhead Street in Jamaica Plain. Um, there is a third one that's installed eleven Lonsdale Street in Dorchester. The power hasn't been turned on to that one yet. We're waiting for EverSource to come by and, and put the meter in and, you know, however source can be, they love to drag their feet. And then, uh, another one, forty-one Ifley Road is under construction in Jamaica Plain as well. That should be completed by the end of the week. Um, and then next week, we're starting construction on two more, one for Hontoon Street in Dorchester. Uh, and one fifty-six Seven Hill Avenue, also in Dorchester.
But Michael, none of those are the, the black.
Yeah, those are all the stainless steel.
Yeah, so that, so just keep that in mind, that the ones that are installed are the stainless steel and we're looking at the black.
Yeah, thank you, Joe. Okay, well, we look forward to the, this program, Michael. Thanks for taking the time to introduce us to it.
Of course, yes, and thank you for taking the time to listen. Um, I really, and some very helpful comments that will, uh, will carry going forward. And, um, hopefully I'm back sooner than later with a, with a charging station that some, we're looking at installing.
That's great. We'll look forward to it.
Alright, thank you, everyone.
Thanks.
Yeah. Rachel, what's next?
Final stretch.
We are, ratification of the April first, uh, meeting minutes. Actually, the agenda said the March fourth meeting minutes. But the, on the, on the agenda slide, it said the March fourth meeting minutes.
What's that? Oh, on the agenda slide. Well, the posted agenda is the four one meeting minutes.
Ah, okay. So, okay, so we're ratifying the April first, um, meeting minutes, no fooling.
I, I moved, we ratified these minutes.
So I get it.
Okay, um, we'll take a vote. Um, Catherine?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
And the chair votes with the motion, so the motion carries. And, um, staff updates, do we have any? I think we have one.
We do?
You, Peter.
You sound like you know something. Peter has been with us before.
Well, I don't, maybe I missed.
You weren't here.
This is my third meeting, John.
Yeah, get with it. We already clapped for him and yelled and all sorts of stuff.
Excellent, good. Anything else?
I'll just add, um, we couldn't find the time for the window subcommittees are going to be sending out sometime before the next, the June hearing, so hopefully we can find a time for the window subcommittee to meet in May in the next two weeks.
Is the, uh, outdoor patio committee.
We want to get the windows done first.
Okay.
And Rachel, anything else? Oh, well, I'll just say we, um, we're on the way to schedule interviews for the preservation planner position. For Gabriella's position, that's moving forward.
Good candidates, Joe.
Excellent, excellent.
That's great. I hope that goes well, Joe.
Thank you.
Yeah. Hey, Joe or Rachel, am I allowed to make an observation of a past application that's completed?
Yes.
So, I, I walked by the electric carriage house on Columbus Ave.
Oh, the violation, yeah.
And the work that's been done is very nice.
They're pretty close. They still have to get rid of the granite facade at the first floor, but they did change the entryways. Yeah, they've done a lot of work there.
There's still a little bit of granite left on the ground floor.
Yeah.
You're saying that's coming out?
Yep, that should be, um, yes.
Yeah, that's so good.
Yeah, they're doing like a wood, a wooden storefront, um.
Well, the wooden storefront is in, in a lot of places, but there, there are returns that still have granite.
Oh, when were you there, John? I walked by.
Like, two days ago?
Okay, I last saw it maybe a week and a half ago and I thought it still had a majority of the granite facade at front. So I'll have to go by, I'll be in the south end Monday, so I'll take a look.
The major, the majority of the front is now wood.
Great.
But, but there, there's an end pilaster that's still granite from bottom to top. And some of the returns that go in, I thought were going to be wood, but are still granite. So maybe they're just, you know, doing a piece at a time.
Yeah.
It, the doors are beautiful. Um, really, really, they, they, the work that is done is really like good quality, really nice. So I just wanted to report that, um, because we went through
Yeah.
the wringer with this one.
Yeah.
So, um, it's nice to see that having, I didn't look above the storefront, it was nighttime and it was dark. So I couldn't really see the facade of the building above the storefront, but the storefront was lit by ambient light. And I could, um, I could at least check that out.
Awesome. Well, I'm excited to hear that progress, um, John, and I'll walk by next time I'm in the south end and see.
Yeah, please do.
Great, that, that one took a minute. I was like, almost.
Yeah, no, you'll see more progress than you saw a few weeks ago.
Awesome.
Yeah, that's it for me.
Hey, awesome. Well, I don't think that we have any, oh, Sarah, oh, Sarah, yes, yes, go for it.
Yeah, so hi, everyone. Um, I, just one last thing. So we're ha- hosting our, the Office of Historic Preservation in collab- collaboration with the Boston Symphony Orchestra is going to be hosting an event tomorrow night, kicking off Preservation Month and celebrating the landmark designation of Boston City Hall. So the event will be taking place tomorrow, starting at five P M. Um, at City Hall, starting off on the second floor and then transitioning up to the third floor of City Hall. So if you all can make it, the Eventbrite is still open online. I can't put the link in the chat, but it's on our website. Um, and it's also on our social media. Um, so.
We have to RSVP or can we just show up?
I mean, if you RSVP, that'd be great. So we have like a head count, but if you also just show up, it would also be good to see you in person, so either way.
They're supposed to bu- uh, purchase a free ticket though, right, from Eventbrite?
Yeah, for, for RSVPs, yeah.
That's just for the head count.
Yep.
Okay.
But it'll be tomorrow, starting at five. It'll go from five to seven thirty, the City Hall.
Sarah, what, what website?
Uh, Eventbrite. So the title of the, of the event is Historic Preservation Month and Boston City Hall Landmark Designation Event.
Um, commissioners, I can email the link to, uh, our most recent, um, hearing, an update email. And you guys can find it there.
That'd be great, Rachel. Thank you, Sarah. Thank you, Rachel.
It'd be a great event. The mayor is coming.
Hmm, nice. That's great. So, um, if there's nothing else, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
I move to adjourn.
A second.
Okay, we'll do this as a voice vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, hearing, motion carries, and we'll see you all next month.
Awesome, thanks.
Hey, everybody.
Good night.